Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Do we have a motion to start the work session?
Second, second.
All right, the first item up is flood mitigation advisory requests.
So at our last, I mean, this is something that dates back to our last meeting. I know the flood invasion advisory committee is very interested. I think we discussed it at our last work session to for the board to kind of some type of special monthly meeting or a piece of our workshop or regular meeting. And at our last meeting, at our last flood meeting, we brought it up again. And I said, like, I'm all in favor of us having that type of meeting, but I know I'm one of five people. So it just would have to be you to deal with scheduling. I know at our last meeting, you also talked about how it would need to be very specific. You know, everything and anything. I just think it's, it should be. Yeah, is this better? Yeah, sorry. So it would just be a discussion. It would be a very goal-centered kind of discussion. It wouldn't just be a meeting where we're covering their entire agenda. It wouldn't be one of their meetings. It would just come into a specific ask, specific questions that we could then go on and answer. So I'm just bringing that here to our board meeting to see if they kind of gauge the interest, but also figure out when we would want to begin those and what day will be preferable for our other board.
Are we talking about an additional meeting?
Correct, an additional meeting.
Well, I know, but I'll show up on it, but I'm not sure that, you know, if there's an appetite for that, I'll do it.
What would be different from, I'm second. What would be different from the flood mitigation meeting to this separate meeting?
So essentially, they, they want you know, we get sometimes a meeting up and start flooding. I know I have bring updates three days off for one meeting, but I will bring updates to their meetings. So I just think the difference would be kind of like an in-between their meetings. They only meet once a month to kind of have time to get an update on any of the efforts that we're making for flood mitigation in our village.
Thoughts?
I'm okay with an extra meeting if that's what they need, because this is something that you, again, Manny has stated that has been on the agenda a few times. And I know we've discussed it, but nothing has been solidified. And I'm quite sure they are waiting for an answer. So um, I'm okay with a additional meeting as long as we are, there's a a consistent date. Because we all have, we are all liaisons to something or several meetings. So if this needs to be an additional meeting to for them, I'm okay with it.
So I was looking at the calendar to try and set, because we have a couple of other meetings that we need to set, and it looks like the third. Typically, the third Monday is free. In both the regard, it would have to be here because it's a big enough group. So the third Monday is empty here and the second Thursday. So those are dates.
I think the third Monday will work because then they had their, their meetings. I'm sorry, I'll let you go, Jerry.
I'm sorry. Wouldn't it be better to use the FMAC meeting night and then advertise it as a as a meeting with the board of trustees, dual appointment, dual, so that whomever, whomever from the board of trustees can attend that meeting. It's pre-advertised, it's legit, and if three of you or five of you, if two of you, at least you're not like adding another date. I don't know what other meetings are on FMAC night, but that's whatever.
If that's okay with them, it's fine with me. They meet what the, they meet the
Four.
The fourth, like, yeah.
Tuesday. And there's no other, typically no other meeting that night. So that's not a bad
So, so Sally would just advertise it as a joint meeting of the board of trustees and the FMAC. And then you're not violating anything whomever shows up.
So this would be, this would be a board meeting at which the FMAC attends? Is that?
No, it's a state meeting that the board attends, the opposite.
Right.
Oh, okay. All right.
They'd be up here, we'd be down there.
If that's okay with them, I think that's a good idea.
It's easiest one, instead of picking another night.
I agree. I'm, 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 like I said, I'm open to any.
Do you think they're open to that?
I think they
Because I don't see anyone that I
I think they may not be as open to it, just because they really believe that another meeting is going to increase conversation. I, I, I don't agree that adding another meeting, they, they suggested kind of some things of like meeting weekly. I don't think that's going to give them the, the results that they think of what's going to happen. We meet every week or every day. I, I think it'll be more to meet more appropriate than we, if we would meet after meeting, kind of we, like I said, we'd be down there, they're up here and have a discussion. I think that's probably a little bit better. But I just think they really are interested in having a meeting that
Additional meeting.
Yeah, an additional one.
That's what was stated.
More, or, or a more board presence. It's not just me as a liaison there, Sharon joining us as well. I just think they really want the board to kind of be there to kind of ask questions. And I agree.
It will.
I, I can, listen, I can, I can send this out to the group and let them discuss having our board attend their next FMAC meeting. And if they're like, no, thanks, and we wanted to meet, then we can discuss further about adding an additional meeting.
It may help because, because a lot of times they've got questions for us for which we do not have the answers. So it, it's like, it's, it's sort of a self-reinforcing conversation with, uh, you know, I wish we, I wish I could give them the answers that they want.
And I think that's, to me, that's the goal of, if it's not of, if there is an additional meeting, it will be very specific questions that will give us time to find the answer. It's not kind of, we just show up and it's like, well, what's the answer on these thirty things? Like, we have no time to prepare or, or kind of come to some resolution.
So both, both the third, the third Monday, the third Monday in January and February are both holiday weekends and villages close. So those are not good dates. So their next meeting is the twenty-third, which is the day after our next meeting. If that doesn't work for them, maybe we could schedule it for the boy, the eighth, or would have to wait.
It's a January twenty-third meeting.
January twenty-third, but
Yeah, we meet on the twenty-second.
Yeah, so if that, we can try for that. If that isn't satisfactory, maybe by, maybe in two weeks, we can figure out a different date.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to email the group and, and let them know that, you know, we can plan to attend on January twenty-third. And if that is not you know, what they're interested in and not seem to be jumping at that, then I'd say that we can be two weeks from then on February eighth.
So then my, then my question is, is this a whichever trustee shows up, or are we all committing to show up on that day?
I think, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to show up that day.
I'll be there for sure.
He'll be there.
We'll be there anyway. So it's really good. I mean, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't like, if it was a, like a, a schedule of trustee, you know, I just want to know what was, what will be.
So I have a few questions.
I have, oh, I have one more thing. And just, just to wrap this up, if we are planning to attend in there and they want to meet January twenty-third, it's, to me, it's in my, my opinion, I think we should ask them for, perhaps to send to us. Let's say I email them tomorrow and say, like, is this okay? And majority of the group is in agreeance, and they think we should meet that day. I think then we should ask for specific questions they want to discuss by the end of the week. Because I just say otherwise, because it's cutting it kind of close. I would rather give them more time, but I think we have specific things they want to discuss, then the conversation could be more productive and we can actually accomplish something opposed to us just showing up not knowing what they're going to ask and that's not being provided answers. So I just think, if that's the case, I just want to be, make sure that we are asking for very targeted questions to be to be asked. I don't want it to kind of go and it be a free-for-all and there's no guided conversation. We're not be able to come to any solution.
Because the, the discussions tend to be fairly wide-ranging.
Yes, I, that's why I wanted to be
Well, it just helps us at the end of the day. It helps, it helps us help them.
Yeah, all right.
So the question's been on the agenda.
It'll be on the agenda. And I just think we would want it to be very specific to you know, it wouldn't be a wide range of twenty questions. I just think I want it to be, I want them to still be able to go through their agenda, but then also you know, take advantage of our presence being there to answer some questions, to answer some of them.
So, so if I'm getting this right, we're, we're all being encouraged to attend the FMAC meetings.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so, so they, they, they kind of like, they, they, they want to, they want a full liaison.
They're very interested in having conversation.
Let me ask a few questions, so. I'm already going, so it doesn't bother me.
Yeah.
But is the full board really what they need? Because I don't know that the five of us are any more informative than the two of us.
I, I
And so so would it not, and I'm very sorry, I'm about to say this, but wouldn't staff be more appropriate to bring to that meeting than five trustees who are not going to be able to sit there and make decisions anyway, because we're going to have to go back to staff? So wouldn't it be better to have either Dan or Jerry there or take turns so that you could actually talk about what's going on with flood? Because honestly, I mean, I could talk about a few things, but I'm, I can't talk in depth the way they can.
I'll put this meeting, I, I put, I put the twenty-third on my calendar, and I'll attend this meeting.
Perfect.
In January. There's some validity to that, right? Typically.
I want to, I want to cut you, but
Typically, I, I don't like taking directives from anyone but the board of trustees. So like if a advisory group says, Jerry, I want you to do this, this, and this, I have to have the board kind of
Yeah, I'm not expecting to do that. I'm, I'm speaking for myself.
Yeah.
But I think to answer questions and tell them where we are at any point in time, or if they have a question about why aren't we doing this? You know, what's the explanation behind that decision? You're going to be a much better voice than we would be.
And that did come up at our, at our last meeting, and I said, because they're very interested in having staff attend. My conversation with them is, I know staff used to attend, and that's when their agendas weren't really followed, and it's kind of just
Yeah, yeah.
free-for-all moment. I, I, I discussed with them that I'm more than happy to give the directive of, of having discussion of, I'm okay with staff attending if, if there's going to be a process and it's going to run like an actual meeting instead of just this open kind of dialogue. If they're looking for an open dialogue, I think that just needs to be another form and not their FMAC meetings. So I know they, I, you want to discuss that with them? Exactly. I want them to stick to the agenda and they stay all
Yeah, we both discussed that.
And then when I spoke to them at the meeting, they said like, they're, they're, they're like, that sounds a great idea. They said they would stay, stick to the agenda if we would commit to having staff attend. So we only had one meeting and they suddenly
Then we can, we can even say that that could be like appropriationary type of thing. And if it doesn't, if, if, if it's not stuck to that, like, they're not sticking to the agenda, we can no longer request that staff show up. That they will get updates because if that is an issue, that's not necessarily on the board.
Okay, so why don't I make the suggestion that you and I, Manny
Yeah.
are there as liaisons. Jerry will attend on the twenty-third because he's already attending. We will have this conversation with them at that point in time. And if that's not going to work, we can come back and have it at the next work session.
I, I generally monitor the, the FMAC meetings anyway. I've, I've watched the whole last one, but yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to email.
And should we notice it anyway, just in case there's three of us in attendance?
Exactly, I think.
All right, so could you notice it about Nora and Leilani and Lou do not have to show up if they don't want to? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to email them and let them know that, you know, obviously Sharon and I are planning to attend, and Jerry's going to be in attendance, but we may have the whole, the entire
They may show up, but really it's about the three of us talking to them. Okay, perfect.
Number two.
Yeah, and Manny and I will follow up with them about the agenda.
We try.
No, 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 but we've been talking about that. And I think between the two of us, we can get it narrowed a little bit over the next month or two.
Exactly, I agree. And then my, the other piece of this is the the cam, the river camera. So we talked a little bit about that in their last meeting. They're not huge fans of the river camera that, you know, the community is communicating that. Some members are okay with the cameras because they, they, they have the understanding that it helps our, like, EOC team kind of know where the water is and know how it flows. They're very interested in us getting river gauges. I just think, I think we all plan to want to get river gauges at some point. I just think the cameras were not the river gauge solution. I think we all knew that was the case. I think we understood the purpose of us getting the cameras. So I just think I've taken upon myself, I've actually been doing some research on trying to find some river gauges. Obviously, it's very difficult because we can't get pricing unless you go and request a quote. But I just don't think in my capacity, that should be something I'm doing. But I have been doing some research on, on some potential solutions that I, you know, I'll bring to Jerry and staff and we can get something on the agenda.
And she knows, I don't know if he's had time, but we're looking at those other, other, other kind of cameras that were, were monitors.
The monitors that
Yeah. Signal, right, which might, which may provide the same kind of information.
And if we find a better solution, the camera's a month a month.
We could, exactly. And they are, and I, I re, I re-express that at the meeting that, like, I, we understand that everybody's a fan of the camera. If we wanted to cut that, we could. We're not, we're not.
Well, can we talk about that for a second, though? I, because I've attended a few of those meetings where they've said it. And so I, if I could just reiterate some of the things they discussed, we went from six cameras to five, because we originally had six, and then I guess one of them was down or is that, do we still have it? Or
Yeah.
Two are down?
No, two of them got flooded, they were replaced.
Got it.
One of them's down, the one at the dam is down.
Okay.
Because of the location where we have to put it, because it's waterworks yard. We can't get it to recharge. The others are operational, no problem.
Okay.
So like a sudden, somebody, or whatever.
Okay, all right. Like, I think in the future, if something happens with the dam as we progress forward, there should be potentially a fixed channel there.
Do we have a microphone in case everybody can hear Jerry? Sorry about that, Jerry.
Thank you.
Sorry, where did I leave off?
One second. So is LMC broadcasting or no? Is LMC broadcasting?
Yeah.
Currently?
On, on the internet.
On the internet only?
Was, um, was it broadcasting from start, from the start? On the internet at least?
And it's all recorded, so it'll still be available later? Okay.
From what I hear, there, there are assumptions that some folks are making that the river cameras don't work. Can you
So we turn, we turn them on when there's an event, right? Because we are paying for broadband on five, six cameras at the same time. And if you keep them on continuously, no reason to keep them on when there's a blue sky day, right? No reason to keep them on. But we put them on, we have access to them, especially James. James manages many of them as far as moving them around and, and keeping on top of it. But we can see them as an EOC as far as an early detection warning. That's what they should be used by the public and nothing else. So when they see the elevation rising, right? The reason we went away from river gauges was because we didn't have real-time reporting. When you look at the YouTube video or the YouTube channel and you see our cameras, that's real time. That's, that's showing in real time. And I understand you don't have the C and, you know, all of that other good stuff. But you can see, because everyone's familiar with these points where that flood, you can see whether the river's starting to come up and there's issues that are potentially happening. We all know the same issues happen every time when the rivers, nothing's different.
Right, there was a couple of other questions I believe came up. One was that at night, people claim that because it's black and white, it's kind of hard to see anyway, so they didn't understand why have it if you can't really see what's going on?
Okay, I get that.
Um, and the other one, the question of the ones getting flooded, you know, maybe they're not really right for, you know, in the middle of a storm, because you're going to have water.
So the last
Okay.
So we're able to move them and get them out of there so we don't lose something.
Do you remember some of the other questions they had? Because I know you were at the last meeting that they really had a lot of questions about cameras. The last, last one?
Before, September twenty-ninth. So, sorry. But that's when I think this
It was more so that they did, they felt that, that they didn't work. I didn't really remember all the listings. Go ahead, because
From taking a river wall with some of that, and we see, they they believe that the cameras are only useful if they're, if they're pointing or directed at something that can measure the level of water. I don't know what that would look like. And I know the solution is just, just get a river gauge, but I just know that that was something they were thinking, because down by the, near the dam, there is, or by what's just doing waterworks, there is a spot where there used to be some, some like metered hole that showed the elevation of, that would measure the elevation of water. So their suggestion was if we were to keep the cameras, could there be something like that put near the river? So then at least if they're looking at the broadcast, they could see this is, you know, it's gone up an inch, two inch, and just kind of measuring that capacity.
So, so I think the disconnect between the public, the members of the, of the flood committee and the staff is that we are very familiar with what we see, and we're very familiar with what's going on while we're looking at the camera, whether it's daytime or nighttime, and we know how to read into it. I guess when you look at the cameras, we can tell whether the shell Drake is about ready to go because of the Center Avenue Bridge and the fact that it's going to hit the bottom of the bridge. And once it hits the bottom, that's when it starts to back up, especially especially the last two events. There's no height, right? There's no three feet, four feet, five feet. I'm not sure how to do that when the water, when, we, we can try to do that. I'm not sure if that's going to help our side of it. It may help the public side of it and their comfort level with the cameras. But as far as us, we manage with those cameras and we have a better understanding. We don't have to go to all of those locations anymore. We can just pull it up on our phone or on our laptop and we go to those, we know what's going on and we know how to make the changes to our whether it's a rescue operation or, you know, our operational
Yeah.
addressing of the
Just thinking, the camera that'd be, you know, a certain amount away from the river. So if you had to focus on some sort of pool or something that showed the height, it'd be very difficult to see. Because it'd be, it'd have to be so large that in itself would probably be an obstruction in the river.
Now, I, I would say this, I, I, I've, I've watched the EOC, I've been in the, in the, in the room twice now, when, when the EOC's up and up and running. And I see them looking at the, at the cameras. And the value to me is, you can see, it's a floatable, go grab that. This is flooding. Let's, they may make sure people are evacuating here. There's get a team down to the, down, down to this place, in other words.
You only know that because you're in the room.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I would, I would encourage all, all members of the board. I know we can't have everybody in, in that room. I mean, I just watched when I was there. But you could, there's no, no doubt at all how valuable they are when you, when you see them in action, because without them, we're blind.
But I think what, what and there's no doubt about that.
Yeah.
That it's amazing for the EOC, because I have been in the same situation as you would be in EOC and witnessing everything. But what Manny's saying, and I think what the residents and those who have made their, who have stated their concerns is that they are not getting, what is, what is, what is the flow or what, what is the process between what, what EOC is seeing and, and how is it getting to the residents? And maybe that is the, the variant?
What EOC is seeing is the operational changes that we have to make while the event has happened. To communicate that to the residents, that's not my focus at the time. My focus at the time is to make sure my twenty staff members who are helping me with this flood situation are exactly where they need to be, what they're supposed to be doing, all of that stuff. And, and I understand that there's a disconnect between the information that we utilize and the public utilizes. And I understand that. I'm not sure
How to.
Really help that. You know, we've seen the thermometers when people are doing fundraising. It's a big giant four-by-eight sheet. If it's something like that next to a flooding river, maybe. But I'm not sure how valuable that is. Does it
Because I think Robert, Robert Ingenito, he sends out whatever new information that comes from you guys, that you guys, that's sent out through Robert. Am I correct?
Yeah, Robert.
So what, that's the email blast, that's the, the telephone automated message.
He handles that one hundred percent.
Okay. All right, know what else.
So real-time river gauges, at some point, if they do exist, and we'll look at that, that could be the solution to potentially augmenting the cameras, reducing the number of cameras. But as of right now, it's extremely valuable to us to have the cameras when we're in a room across the street on the top floor of the firehouse, running an operation that gets a little hairy sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, it, 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 it is, it's impressive to see. And, and I know, I, I saw, I saw them in, in, in use at least twice, where you went and got a floatable, and when you sent, sent crews to a certain area where, where the water was getting high on, on a street, but you wouldn't know that unless somebody was there and called and, and you could see it, see it in real time. And that's very valuable. I know it's, it, it, it you know, when you, when you budget and staff for an emergency, they, it only, you only need it in an emergency. And I think, I, I don't think there's any question that, that they work. The perception that they, they don't work is, is a little trouble.
We don't really do play-by-play.
Can I suggest that since the flood mitigation committee has raised, has raised concerns that reflect their concerns and concerns of the residents, and then they've been partially addressed tonight, we try that Manny and Sharon report back to the flood mitigation committee and see if their concerns are addressed or whether they want to continue the conversation.
Actually, I think I would, sorry, I'm going to disagree with that. On Tuesday, the twenty-third, you're going to be there? If you could be prepared to discuss cameras, gauges, and EOC, because I've seen it too, but they don't. And so that they understand what's happening and why you, why you want to keep it versus what they see and they don't see a purpose.
And I'll certainly do the, if Manny gives me whatever links you have, Manny, I'll do the research.
And, and that's why I, I think when I email them, I'm, I'm going to, since we will have staff, I, I really want them to have send an advance question. I don't want it to kind of be like these
Well, we know that's going to be a question.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I just, I just know, that is very key to me, because otherwise, they were kind of blindsided. And if they ask them that we're not prepared to answer, and they don't answer, then they're going to be upset. I don't want anybody
They also may have questions. I mean, they're, you know, I would imagine that the, the first meetings are going to be more intense than the subsequent meetings and that let's say they have ten questions, maybe only three of them get we are only able to address three of them the first night, at least people, we know what the questions are. And I think I think what they're feeling is they're not being heard. And they provide, you know, an important function to the village, and we do want to hear them and we want to get back to them. So.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yeah, there was one other thing that I heard when I, I listened in on the EOC meeting at two o'clock this afternoon, where you were in preparation for the upcoming weather event. And I didn't realize that when you move, if you move the, the camera during an event, that will, that will you're not going to, you're not going to see that on YouTube anymore.
Until it's recalibrated.
Until it's recalibrated. So it's not that the, the camera has gone down, but it hasn't been recalibrated yet. You can see it at EOC, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's, so, so, so they, they may appear to go down to the public, but, but they're being moved for, for good reasons and and, you know, and if you need them.
Well, they're being moved for whatever it is.
Yeah, right.
Thanks.
I don't know. Okay, so the next item is the, the, the audit of the bills or the vouchers and Sally and Leilani and I, and we're all at NICOM, which is New York Conference of Mayors. And we all did a lot of trainings, and one of them was the controller's training. And we have an obligation to really be reviewing all of the bills. And we're not doing that as the board of trustees. And it's, so we, we get an audit, which we're not doing tonight, but we don't actually have the backup. And there is a provision in village law that allows us to designate someone who's an auditor. And that person can't be a can't be involved in the purchasing or the paying of the bills. It has to be somebody different who's just auditing it. And in, and I think in, in this community, because we have a fairly large clerk treasurers office, we are able to segregate a lot of that, you know. So I think that we have, that, that, I mean, I think we
There's three, so we, we have three certifications or free approval. We have a free approval process, right? We have, we have the department head, then we have the clerk treasurers, then we have the managers.
Right.
That's what we do right now. But we do not have a village or
For us to debt, and so it's the villages, village trustees' job to audit. But that's not a simple process, because it's a binder like this thick, and it's hard to, it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's not, it's not time efficient. So when one of the suggestions at NICOM was that, you know, there's a, the binder is here, and the, the board of trustees looks through the binder before the meeting. Well, I'm not sure how far, I mean, I think that that's more than a fifteen-minute
It takes us two hours.
Through it. So
Final approval takes two hours typically.
So, so, and if we are to designate a separate auditor, it has to be somebody that really has, doesn't have any, it's not somebody who purchases or who orders or who pays a bill. So it's not the staff that we have now. So it would be a different staff person. That's what, that's, I mean, this is just having talked to the controller's office and having having gone through the training and read the instructive manuals from the controller. So I just want us to figure out a way of doing this so that the board of trustees is complying with its responsibility. And I'm not suggesting that, that the village isn't doing it the right way, but I think we, when we approve the audit, really need to have more information about it. So there was a conversation about us looking through, being, having, having access to KVC to, you know, to spot check so that we don't need to send an email to staff and then have staff send us the memo. So I, that's, I think we need to develop some sort of a process that, that's compliant. And it may be designating a separate auditor, which large municipalities, which, I mean, and school districts do, or it may be Um, figuring out a way for the Board of Trustees to be a little more hands-on with what is our legal responsibility.
Yeah, so we can certainly, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Jerry.
So we can certainly set up a workstation in Village Hall or provide access, which sometimes gets a little rocky.
Hmm, yeah.
Because it's a um, VPN.
Hmm.
But we could certainly set up a workstation for any one of the board members to come in. And sign in and look through the K B S bills, and we don't, Nora, we don't necessarily print it out like the agenda that just passed the mayor.
Right.
Um, but we look through, right, because everything has a tab and we look into the backup, and if it doesn't seem right, we start investigating. Um, why this is this amount and all of that stuff. That's one way we can do it, and then the board would be the governing, the governing body would be the ones approving the abstract. The second way, according to the controllers, is if an auditor is appointed, then the governing body is cut out.
Yeah, I know, and I, and I, and that's.
Sure if we discussed that or not, I'm okay with it, but.
I mean, I think we need to real, and that's what I think, that's, and that's a policy decision, and I don't think that's like a one evening policy decision, but.
So. Um, so when you said that um, most uh. Larger municipalities, what what are their, what is their size in terms of, are we talking about White Plains or a shell, are we talking about, are they similar to ours?
I mean, these are Long Island who are approximately our size, it's an onerous, there's a lot of bills, so.
I know that.
And and for us to go into Village Hall and do it as, you know. Would, could be onerous for the staff, it's one thing to set up a workstation where we can review it, but we can't be involved in the in the. In the actual, you know, organizing of the audit, that's not gonna help you and it's not really. Yeah, just looking through it, and and we're supposed to be looking through it to make sure everything is all done, you know, and I will say that. Um, you know, I I, there were people at N I com who just said, I can't believe that you're doing it this way, that you're not doing it this way. You know, there were, there were treasurers, clerk treasurers, who were just sort of surprised at the question that I asked, and the controller was really surprised. Now, I'm sure there are many communities, like I, who, who don't. Provide paper or online access to every trustee, but I ju- and I'm, and I don't know what the solution is, I just think. This is a problem and we need to figure out how to fix it, that's, you know.
So it 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 may be, it, I don't necessarily wanna say it's a problem, because then if by saying it's a problem, saying that. The staff is not doing their job, so maybe like rewording is, I don't think it's a problem, maybe it is something that we, you. Um, because I wasn't necessarily in the, I don't think I was in the room when you were speaking, when you attended that session, but um. But there is an issue that you 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 think that this is something that we um, should take a look at in terms of having an additional order. Auditor, um, outside of the three-step process that Jerry presented.
So I think the thing, I I, so I, I I think it's, I think the people at fault here are the Board of Trustees, I mean, I think that, that's what I'm saying, I'm not.
Are you saying that, I'm I'm sorry, but are you saying that the Board of Trustees um, as a whole or single? As si- a single individual entity? I mean, I read the bills and I, when I do have questions, I go into the the village offices and I ask specific things, so.
We're supposed to be looking at every bill and, and not together, but necess- I mean, we don't need to all do it together, but there's a lot of backup. And we're supposed to be looking, and we're supposed to be looking at that, so. Um, and I I will, and I will say, you know, it, we we do have, there are enough che- I think there are checks and balances, I think the staff. Does a good job of segregating this review, so that if there's a problem, somebody else catches it, so I'm not. I I just think we are not complying with what our legal responsibility is as elected officials. So we need to figure out a way to work with staff, I mean, and you know, Bob, you may disagree with this, but I, I think we need to to figure out a way to work with staff. To come up with a solution that keeps us in compliance with what we're supposed to be doing, and that is something the staff. That we're not.
Well, we are complying, but if we wanted to, because I read the the the, what you, the additional. Documents that you put in and they say that, you know, villagers do not necessarily have to go this extra step, so I, did it. It, am I reading it wrong?
We are, we have, we we have to know what we're approving.
No, that, I know that, we do have to know what we're approving, but I'm, in terms of having an auditor.
No, we don't have to have an auditor.
We don't, so then, but to go to extra step, yes, then maybe we. Um, by not having the backups and not, not in front of us at every board meeting and a stack of papers. Maybe that's where it's not in compliance, but again, we have access to it if we, if we add, so had the quest, um, at needed, um, some questions answered. So I don't know, it it, to me, it's wording, I don't know, I I'm just listening to wording and I wanna.
If you do have an auditor, you're cut out.
Yeah, if we have an auditor, we're cut out.
All right, I mean, that's just.
Oh, we don't have access to review it, that's, and that's what we need, we need to.
We need to do.
All right, well, I I would suggest that the idea of of uh, having, making the information available. The to members of the board and even members of the public, if they wanna come in, uh, to to go through it, if it's, if it's there on Wednesday. And you're so inclined to go and go through it, then uh, then have at it, I mean, I I I, we we do get audited regularly, but yeah, am I correct? Uh, yeah, so, and 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 problems have not come up in the past, have they?
Not, not with our.
Well, uh, so.
Not with the bills, but every once in a while, there's a little bit of the the bond thing, how the bonding was announced.
Okay, all right, got it, got it, so so uh, so, I mean, uh, uh, I'd make it available. And and if any one of us wanna go in and go through it, then we should do it.
So we do, we do third approval by noon on Thursday. It gets printed typically between Thursday afternoon and Friday morning.
Yeah.
Um, we can do third approval Wednesday morning, and there's a couple of days.
But you have it available on Wednesdays?
Two weeks, it's not onerous, it's just how we do things. Um, but if, if the board wanted an availability or board or anyone wanted availability. At a kiosk outside or inside our area, just let us know. Um, we can set that up, we can set that up, give you a generic. Uh, access to K B S.
So you said, I mean, there, there, I'm sorry, oh, go ahead.
I under- I I'm all for if we wanted to go and look at and have access to a system, I just think having one day where we would be able to go and. And do that is just not the way to do it, like I'd rather have access for multiple days, if it's this onerous and has these, it's these many documents, I think. Most of us work, I don't think I could just go and take a full day to go look through thousands, potentially thousands of pages for every, so that might just rather think if I rather. Have access to my iPad or something.
We can also do those once a month, like a lot, a lot of other communities do, right, and then you would have multiple days to be able to.
I'm more.
We would create the deadline.
I'm more in favor of something like that, I just think I think it takes a little bit more than a day for us, which we're not all kind of used to it to go through.
Just one thing, yeah.
When I talk.
In terms of um, in terms of the timing, so I mean, the the board approves bills typically on Mondays. It takes us several days to process uh, and mail out uh, checks. Uh, that means we can't even reopen the program for. Uh, uh, staff to put in, enter purchase orders and vouchers to be paid on the next aspect until usually Thursday or Friday of that week, so. And that that, you know, part of the, part of the process is when we can do certain things, because. We can't have the, we can't allow the system to be open to enter vouchers while we're processing the current uh, abstract. But, you know, as I think the, a couple options, I mean, the the remote access, I mean, we could certainly, you know, work with I T. Uh, and then, you know, the one thing about the uh, you know, if if uh, you know, Jerry or I were the auditor. Uh, what that would help would be, we could probably stagger the bills, so we wouldn't be doing it the same week as an agenda.
I am almost more in favor of more time for us to be able to review, I think one day is not enough time, I just think it's it's the same scenario, it's us coming up.
Then the auditor.
One day secure and approve bill, I just think it needs to be, if we're going to make this change, and we think we should do it differently. Then we need to have access for multiple days before you have that third, oh, exactly, we get before we have that third approval. I just think that's what I think.
If I could take what we're all saying and with what Jerry said. If you could make a kiosk available at the regatta for us to be able to access. If you could give us remote access, we'll understand that occasionally due to internet or whatever, it might not work perfectly.
Yeah.
And if we could move the bills to once a month, that would give us time, is everyone okay with that as a plan?
I I as long as I.
Right now, yeah.
The key to me is the.
As a trial, like we could try it out. Which also means you won't be cutting out extra days for, if you're processing twice a month. And you go to once, you don't have to take away days for putting in purchase orders and.
And it, is staff okay with?
Twice as many, but it'll be.
Is staff okay with this?
That's my point.
I mean, I mean, really. Yeah, well, okay, I mean.
But I think, I think we are, or.
Once a month.
I'd like to invite you up here. Tell us why once a month is the, is the worst idea.
Yeah, this thing.
That gets me a little nervous, we, I mean, as far as.
You need the microphone.
Um, we do, sorry. Um, we do have the ability to cut annual checks for utility, the utilities, and those are the ones that make me the most nervous as far as going once a month. We do have legal, we are legally able to cut manual checks.
Prepaid, right, that that we don't, we don't have to approve the.
Right, you'll approve them after, after.
Yep.
Um, we can try the once a month, I get a little, no. Get a little nervous with the once a month, but you know, we already have people, with twice a month, we have people calling us for payments and, you know, just looking for checks.
You know, my responses.
I know. Um, you know, we're willing to try anything and we can come back to your.
I mean, you could still, couldn't you still do a check run of all the utilities? I mean, without doing, making manual checks, couldn't you just, or do you have to wait for us?
No, no, we.
Yeah.
Beforehand, is there? An abstract available, I mean, I um. Before you, before I sit down at this kiosk. Is is I'm just looking through everything that we're, we're, you know, we're, every bill we're paying, every paper click we're bought, we're we're buying. Because, I mean, because.
Yeah, that's how we do it, we have to go through one by one.
Yeah, I I know, but but you're professional staff, I mean, I I I'm I'm not.
It's the same for us, things are right, it's the same work for us, it's gonna be more complicated for you, but there has to be some, either. The board, other the the, the board hires an outside army, which is like an auditing firm that makes sure that everything looks good before it gets paid and then. It just gets approved.
Hmm.
The board reviews it, or we really don't have a third choice, one of the others.
I mean, the 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 point being, I mean, I I look at this the way I used to. Um. Watch governments, uh, uh, other governments, you go through, you see something that doesn't look right, and then you, then you delve into that, I mean, but but.
We we do that one by one on the screen, because we make sure that we're disciplined to look at every single item and not scan some type of sheet.
Yeah, I mean, I'm 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 not really interested in getting into the weeds on the on the telephone bill, I mean, so um, uh, unless something looks out of whack on the outside.
So, I understand, I I understand that, but it's, it's, it's your legal responsibility. So that's, that's where I am, it's your legal responsibility to do it, or we need to designate an audit.
Well, I I, that that's, 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 uh, let's designate an auditor, wanted to read. Because I don't, I don't think this is, I mean, listen, Nora, you've been talking about this a long time, and uh, and um. I you, I don't think you've ever had the time, I I, you know, you took it down and go through all the bills.
Don't have access to it, I mean, in order for me to do it, I have, in order for me to do it, then I, then it it involve, it. It gives, it gives, it's too much to ask of the staff for us to go down there and do it with them, that's my point.
Right, we're gonna still do it the way we do it, and then at that point, however, the approval goes through, whether you have time or you don't have time. You just move it along, bring it to the meeting once a month, second, second meeting of every month, that's when the abstract appears. And we can come up with the access and the kiosk, and if you don't have time, you don't have time, it's just how it is.
And now, now, um, uh, members of the public who wanna wanna look through this, and obviously, if they have questions, they come to us. They don't come to you, uh, we go to you, so so, um, how would members of the public, uh.
The same way you do it at the meeting now, where you provide the abstract that you're approving uh, on a vote.
Hmm.
And then they would ask questions of certain things, whether you know it or not, you'd be able to answer those questions or get back to them.
Okay.
That's actually in the controller's guidance, that they have, that the public has to ask the governing board, yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Or.
They don't get the third approval, they review it so that they can approve it here at the meeting on a vote.
We just have to go to the office in advance.
Yeah, or.
How how mu- I mean, you 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 mentioned an order, how much would, how much would an auditor cost?
Couple hundred bucks an hour, minimum.
How how ma- how many hours per uh, on a monthly uh?
Takes us, takes us two, two, maybe two and a half hours every two weeks.
Every two, or so what if, what if it goes?
Amount of time, just, but an auditor, I mean, the same amount.
Depending on how we set up, I mean, one, one of the problems right now that I have is that. Um, you know, the, we're reviewing the bills during the agenda preparation week, so, you know, I'm pretty busy during that timeframe. So, i- if there was something that, if if we had once a month that we could probably uh, schedule it a little bit differently.
Yeah.
We'd be able to look at these bills during a non-agenda preparation week, which would really allow us. It would not be as big a uh, a time crunch for us.
If I understand it though, if we had a paid auditor from the outside, they're looking at process, like, that's okay, they're just trying to find out. Um, if the process was followed from the beginning to the end correctly.
Hmm.
What we would know that's different from an auditor is if we see something that looks wrong, as far as what was approved to be. Done or where we thought money was being spent, and that's different than an auditor.
I'm glad, yeah.
Right, I wanna be able to look at the bills.
And it's really just process, it's not gonna really do our responsibility.
Some of the things I have to follow up with staff about, like, I think worse is being off by six cents.
Now they, but the board members would follow up with them, and when something looks weird, we would follow, they would follow up with us, and we'd explain. Yeah, we just speak to the department head and this is the reason why this is on the bills.
All right, so, I'm sorry, uh, are we okay with trying this?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, uh, kiosk at the regatta, so we can physically go in and look at the, anything we need to. Access so that we could do it from home, and moving the bills to being paid once a month, so that we have more time to do it, and they have time to do what they need to do.
Perfect, I just wanna make sure I like.
Is that what we're agreeing to? Yes, yes, so this can come off the agenda too, fantastic.
Thank you.
Uh, Laura?
Oh, okay, so um, the capital budget and plan, um, I, I. The, I'm the liaison to the budget committee, and the budget committee um, has, uh, is actually sent some information that I think is on. Backup on the agenda today, um, and that, um, they. They would like us, and I would like us, to revise, to to really. Figure out a capital budget that's um. A set amount of money that we spend every year, and that we know that, let's say it's one million dollars that we're going to spend. And we have four projects that we're going to do, but then when we have an emergency and we have to. Do a different kind of a capital project, either we remove something as the town of Amerenik has a practice of doing, or we figure out. Um. How we're going to fund it, and that we have, and obviously. Nothing is set in stone, because there's, we, you know, we factor in cost overruns, but. It it, budgeting is not just a science, it's an art, it's more, probably more of an art, but. With the, with the capital budget, we should be understanding that. When we go over our expenses for what we, what we projected, and this year, when we adopted our capital budget, which. Which, which is on our backup now, we have a list of projects that are key to a different document, but we didn't actually adopt. And a number, and so, and now tonight, we're being asked to adopt two cap- two projects that are not even part of that. And it's, we don't factor that into our tax rate, we don't factor that into what the bonding is gonna cost us, and. You know, when we bond something, we don't pay, we don't start paying off the bond the year we bond it, but we are incurring. Operating debt in the future, and so I think we, I I'm just looking for a more systematic capital budget that we follow more carefully and that. Um, we've, you know, we've come a great way in identifying the projects, but I still think we're not there in terms of. Making sure we spend what we know we can afford and what we've committed to spending.
So, Mayor, if I could, as one part of this, I think when the board reviews the operating budget. There should also be a component for the board to set the amount of. Capital expenditure that's comfortable with some of the information that Mara's asking for, which is if we do fifteen million. How much will our? Debt service go up? If we do seven million, how much will our debt service go up? And at that point during the budget discussions, we've added in the past few years a capital budget discussion. It can be done during the work session of the capital budget where there's a board that sets an amount, okay? Barring emergencies and all of those, right? So that you have that, um, it's approving a five-year plan, but focusing on a one-year plan, okay? Because if we stay with the one-year plan, we're gonna get dinged by the rating agencies. They wanna see five-year plan. They want, you you know that, it always, when you go to an ICOM, all they wanna do is show five-year plans. If you have a five-year plan. That's not set in stone, but you have a one-year plan, spending limit that is set in stone. Then I think you may have more comfort, you have a higher comfort level. I think that's what I'm reading, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I and I think that's really the controller's guidance, that you you you're planning out for five years, but. You know, you're really making sure that in the calendar year, you're spending what you committed to spending, to spend and what you can afford to spend. So that you're not, you know, going to get to a situation where you are, you've spent so much that you bonded that your taxes have to go up because you have to pay that principal and interest in. You know, in the operating.
It would be helpful if the. Controller provided some more detail and I can give you an example of another state. In another state, you have to raise five percent. Of your capital plan in the operating budget as a down payment. So now it's fixed, right? So if you have, if you have ten million dollars, you have to. Have half a million dollars in your operating budget, just to, so they kinda link the two together. Here they don't do that. Here they don't do that. They just. This needs a little different.
Yeah, it would be kinda like a a transfer to capital.
Yeah.
In in the general fund budget, you have a line, how we have like transfer to, uh, water, transfer to.
So it sets it, it sets it in in some sense, it sets it, right? So that you can't deviate too much from it. But when you do deviate, okay, you've got ten million, but. We we're not gonna spend this two million because we need this two million for something more imminent, more emergency, more more emergency related. So you still have the ten million, you're just shuffling.
You have to make those choices as opposed to getting to twelve million.
That's the way you can approach it if you want to.
Well, can I understand what you're saying? You're saying we could essentially prove that they're almost like. Hot, like we're saying this year, fiscal year, we're gonna.
Limiting, it's a limit.
Exactly, at a limit of, you know, we're not gonna spend more in capital expenditure of ten million, and it could be any of the items on our plan. Is that what you're saying?
It should be items.
Well, no, should be items. What he's saying is a max, like, we'll spend ten million this year, no more. We could spend less, but we can't spend more.
Exactly.
And we have these five projects set, and then an emergency happens, we have to move one of those projects out in order to fit in the emergency.
Yes, but.
You know, taking that or taking action as a board. Yeah, I was making sure I was understanding that. In other words, in other words, it's like a debt.
Yeah, it's a ceiling.
Ceiling. When we hit it, we have to take a vote to go over it or 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 cut something.
Yeah.
Just like Congress, just like Congress.
Yeah, just like Congress. Well, let's let's not be too much.
Let's not be like Congress.
So according.
That could work. If it's part of the budget process.
That's fine.
Annually, when the temporary budget gets announced, the work sessions happen, and then there's a capital budget plan of all of the department heads. Fine for whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then it becomes a priority situation where we feel these items are priority, like in this village, public safety and flooding has a priority.
Which is so, which is really what we're supposed to be using as priorities anyway.
I I'm just based upon that, um, our community is coming up on a lot of, um. Systems, let failing but out there, going out of commission, like the sewer system, hundred years, it's it's been over a hundred years, so. Things like that, and then how our playgrounds, they wear out, and it's that continuous thing, so. I'm just, I can't see it right now, but I just need help with that, but how do we, how can we add things? Because there's gonna be things that we wanna do. To improve our community, cause so if it's like the, um. The thing that came up last year with the the music festival or something, just having something in our community, how is how is.
Talking about capital projects and you're talking about the infrastructure and things, couldn't we, Jerry theoretically. Create the same kind of schedule you would do with the maintenance of vehicle, uh, replacement, I'm sorry, of vehicles, which is, you know, when we put in this park, when we put in. Uh, the turf and the equipment, it has a lifespan of approximately fifteen years, and then that becomes part of the rotation. So if we have five parks, every three years, we're looking at those parks instead of two or three hitting at once.
We could follow fire trucks, fire engines and trash trucks that way.
So couldn't, we could do that with other capital issues as soon as we come up with a plan.
Well, I mean, that's why if you look at the capital group of project worksheets that we developed, it says when it was last done and what the useful life is, so we have an idea. Uh, as policymakers and and staffers to where where we are, where we're going.
Yeah, that information was never known until we started.
And and I and I think like we're partway there with those worksheets and we've still probably have to do an inventory of everything that we have, which is, but that's a baseline for capital budget. But what we where we are not in the right spot is that we aren't disciplined about how we administer. Our capital spending, so we just keep adding things.
You feel more comfortable with a limit and then working within that set.
Because ultimately, you know, the more we spend, the more we have to increase our, I mean, like the states that require you. To put it in your operating budget are, you know, are spot on because it's going to go into our operating budget and we don't want that surprise.
Yeah, right. So that's why they do it. I think Leilani was talking about something, maybe in operating.
I guess, cause I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, um, the wishlist of of every department and what, not even just the miss, the wishlist of things that came through the capital, um. Budget plan, and I'm looking at all the items, so if we decide to do one fire truck, but no police, you know, police car, it it. Something may get missed and I'm afraid that we're just gonna be focusing so hard on, um. Obviously, our needs become come before our wants. That is just, that's obvious. Our needs always come before our wants, but. Even in if we're just sticking to our needs, even within this budget that we're trying to create. Where do the need, where do the wants come in? Because that's what it, what brings the, what attracts, uh, people to our community.
The wants come in from up here because our capital plan was created as an exercise for the staff, for the department heads. I'm requiring you to think of everything that needs to be upgraded, replaced, added, so that we can operate this village. At a high level because that's the expectation, right? That's why we created, that's why we.
Mm-hmm.
Dan created the worksheets. We put it all together. It's a three hundred page document.
Mm-hmm.
Very few municipalities have a three hundred page capital plan. But those are the things that the staff and we, Dan and I agree. Um, should be considered for purchase in the future, but then the wants have to be policy decisions by the board. It has to be on the, at the board level that we want something else. So we don't want a new police car, we want a bandstand for the park so we can have more events. That's your discussion. That can't be our discussion.
No, I got it.
Yeah.
And and if we hit that limit, then it's it just it means that we have to have a discussion, not just whether we wanna approve this expenditure or not, but if we wanna. If we wanna go 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 beyond the limit that we've set.
Or or we wanna pick something.
Or we wanna eliminate something else, exactly. So so it is.
Limit, the vote is closed on that limit. Understand, you have to wait for next year, right? Once, if you're gonna create a limit and then you're placing it, then we're doing exactly what Congress does.
Next year, why pick away from something else?
Once there's a limit, there's a lid on that limit and then you have to wait.
Yeah, but that's what Bruce just said.
That's the discussion at the board level.
That well, that 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 may, uh, end up. Turning out to be unwise. I mean, yeah, okay, all right.
I mean, maybe that.
We're entering into our budget year, and I think this is the time to start having.
We may need to discuss.
So then maybe this is something that can we caucus this like at a different.
What about the budget committee? Can't they do so? I mean, I don't wanna volunteer anybody, but couldn't, I mean, shouldn't they have, well, let me rephrase that.
Yeah, but couldn't the budget committee look at the documentation you have, the three hundred pages plus, um.
The comp plan plus whatever and have those conversations and create. A draft for us to start with, because certainly none of none of us have the the time to go through every one of those.
They recommend, this is what we should, that's what they should be doing if they wanna do that work, if they wanna get into the weeds and do that work, they should be doing that.
I will say that we met, Sharon came to the budget committee meeting last week and the and and we all have decided, we all talked about. Being better at coming back to the board and the public with what our respective committees are interested in.
Yeah.
And the budget committee wants to know what they can help the board with, and I think if this is something that we all.
This is, this is it.
They can get the information. We can figure out how it, like, for instance, what our capital expenditures have been. I mean, I know that you have a lot of this because you you put down the information.
Because we also deal with it every single day.
Right, so we can sort of get historically, what was it this year? What was it last year? What was the year before? That may have guided us.
Right.
So today the email from Laura was four point seven million, right? That's what, so some of the years it's thirteen, some years it's two, some this year it's almost five. So you're right.
And I think that structure would be helpful and it would also be helpful because when when, um, when new people come on board of trustees, you know, it's. I mean, I've gone to tons of controller training. It's 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 hard to know all the aspects of the job, so if you have. You know, if and the staff, you know, if it weren't for the staff, we couldn't do this job, but it might be good to have a structure that. New trustees or old trustees like me can rely on in budget cycles.
Be creating a policy for that.
Yeah.
This is our policy, this is how we do it.
So before we even, um, approve anything else. Are we waiting for the budget committee to make their suggestions, to make their recommendations?
Well, I mean, we have to, we'll have to adopt a capital plan in. April, right? It's so it's like three months. Yes, so we're starting in the budget process, so I think that, you know, it's not, we're not gonna adopt it till April. And so, but we're gonna talk about it before April, so if we can, I mean, I can get back to the budget committee and let them know that this is what we decided. Probably some of them are watching the meeting and.
I don't recall what was done when she was here, but there's a capital budget meeting, work session here with staff.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was done in the past that way as well.
That I think that's that.
If it was a separate meeting or not, but we've added a separate meeting to the budget process for the capitals, for the capital expenditures.
Well, I mean, I I I think the the capital budget that we prepare now is a lot more in-depth.
Yeah.
Than what we did, you know, five, six, seven years ago. Um, you know, so we we didn't have the, uh, breadth of of backup that we were providing to the board. Uh, you know, we really, I think we've really turned to a a a major effort on the staff's part to put this together. Uh, so it was a little bit easier to review the capital budget because it was a little bit simpler of a document, uh, but, um. But just lost my train of thought, but.
So so we know.
Yeah.
So what we're, we know, we know what has to happen at the capital budget meeting.
And I'll report back to the budget committee and they'll, you know, they'll do that kind of.
So they'll ask questions, how much debt is coming off this year? How much is is a million dollars worth of debt to our tax rate, all of that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
We'll be ready for that.
Because also that, you know, the kinds of things like we've had a, you know, a couple of, uh, four odd years. And, you know, we've gotten a lot of, you know, we get grant reimbursements, but like, you know, that gets booked somewhere, but that's an expense we've made, but we, you know, FEMA reimbursements. Aren't always apples to apples because sometimes we're getting reimbursed for staff time that we would have paid, so it's sort of like extra money.
Yeah, all the equipment costs.
And so because, uh, and it's sometimes it's tied in overtime, so that's not gonna happen forever, but that's that's helped us build reserves.
It has. We've been, we've been healthier because of the ability for us to detail every penny and every dime. Events, and unfortunately, we have events.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't want more events.
Yeah, it it that's a, that's a, uh, counterintuitive reality is that sometimes. Uh, at a major event that should cost us money actually doesn't.
But I think we need to understand why, you know, we've had our reserves have been growing and it may be, you know, and we don't want our reserves to grow that way.
Yeah, I think actually in the in the monthly report that you received today.
But we do it because it's available.
Okay, well.
We have to calculate what's been obligated for Ida. And I think we're at one point nine billion dollars.
No, it's 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 and it's great that the staff has been able to keep track of it, because I'm sure some communities aren't able to keep track of it.
No, it's a bear.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You want to move us to the next thing or is?
He's coming up.
Oh, he's coming up, right? Okay, good.
You want me to? She can't really talk.
It's okay.
We have to.
What about Manny?
Manny's gonna explain. Can you first, I'm sorry, before you start, can you explain where we're at now? Um, so that we understand what you want changed.
Yes, I think a year ago, um, on the board, something that we were looking for discussion. Kind of reading some of the mandate of any new development would have a percentage of their units seem all affordable. And essentially, I think I'm, my new proposal is to essentially increase that percentage from, I think it was ten percent a year ago to twenty percent. But I, but and so then also, um. Currently having not to exceed the thirty percent, between thirty or eighty percent of AMI, cause I just think if we really are talking about affordable housing, we're not talking about that, something that's in the eighty or one twenty, one forty, but we're talking anything from thirty percent. To eighty percent, so I'm just trying to make this a little bit stricter and a little bit, um, it's such an enhanced any development, I hope, I mean, you know, we have a lot of developments that come to the village. But I just think that we need to make sure that we're gonna keep an American reverse community that has affordable places to live. We need to make this change. I've heard, um, Greg Cutler opine on this, uh, when I was, we were having a meeting. This week on, uh, on a different subject and, um, uh, there there is a, there is a point at which if this number goes up too much. You can end up killing development. I mean, uh, uh, so, so.
Too bad for the community.
So, um, uh. If ten percent is too low, i- i- is twenty percent too high?
It's fifteen, the middle.
Yeah, I don't know. Is, could Greg opine on that? Is he?
Uh, I'm here. My video, um, is being blocked, but but I am here. Um, if I could, I could share my screen if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, hopefully it works. Do you see, do you see this?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this is an analysis that was done in twenty nineteen. As in relation to the moratorium and, um, essentially what we looked at, can you guys hear me? Okay?
Well, you X out of the navigation of, um, column on the left-hand side.
Oh, sure.
Thanks.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, so this was done in relation to the moratorium. One of the the ideas that came up during the moratorium was exactly. What, uh, Manny is alluding to, which is increasing the, um. The percentage of affordable and or, um, going deeper in affordability, so. Right now, it's ten percent of units must be affordable at, uh, eighty percent of the area median income. So we looked at the model ordinance, which requires sixty percent of the area median income on rentals. And eighty percent on, you know, for sale properties, uh, condos, typically condos. Um, and so what we found is in, we looked at the C two and the C one TOD zone, and we found the FAR threshold at which point. Um, they no longer are viable, um, with different levels of return. Fifteen percent return was. Labeled as maybe feasible. I would actually say that's definitely feasible. I think we've we've learned a little bit more since then that, uh. Fifteen percent return, you can still get financing from a bank, um, to do your project. Um, and you'll see that these are the different FAR levels, um, and the different, uh. Policies that we looked at. So model ordinance at sixty percent, we found it was not profitable, uh. Same with, uh, with reduced parking, it could be profitable at two point eight eight percent, at two point eight eight, uh, FAR. Um, and at market rate at one point seven five and, you know, currently, currently it's, uh, at no inclusion, it's a two point oh FAR in the C two. In the TOD, the same, the same thing. Um, I'll remind you that, uh. The TOD does not have the FARs listed below anymore, so none of this is is viable and, um, that kind of tracks with what we've seen. Um, there hasn't been a TOD development application that has moved forward since the moratorium. Uh, the numbers just don't make sense, so, uh, it's it's good, but, you know, if you require too much, then no projects will happen. Um, and therefore no additional affordable, affordable units will come unless you're going with the all affordable route.
What?
Transit oriented.
Transit oriented, that's what that was.
So. I I I was on the board in two thousand nineteen when we went through this and Dan Natchez and I wanted to do exactly what you're proposing and we were. We were the only, we were, we it didn't make it because. We it didn't make it because all of this, all of the experts, including, I mean, and Greg. Real estate developers, both affordable developers and and market rate developers, just said the numbers that you you'll just basically. Create a situation in which nothing will get built. And then in order to get that degree of affordability, you need to. Make sure you have to work with um state and federal funding sources that. Will help those projects and. In these kinds of situations, it's a for market developer, they don't want to do that.
New Jersey, it's twenty percent mandated.
Yeah, you had.
And and there's a lot of state federal money that comes their way when you propose this kind of stuff. Without that additional money.
It doesn't.
Becomes difficult for the developer to make a million.
But the money is available now, isn't it?
I'm not really sure. I think that the money's available, I don't know.
Jerry, do we know how many units there are? In the village that are available and then how many of those are empty?
Um, we have two hundred and six seventy six affordable units. I don't know how many are.
Are we talking about market rate? Because the essentially the vacancy rate is 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 zero uh. There, there are really no vacant units that stay on market for more than a couple of months.
But they're not.
For rentals.
Because what we consider, but we already have in a community that is already considered affordable, it really isn't affordable if it's going by eighty percent on AMI. So that's what it it can, it's stated as affordable, but it's really not.
It's affordable. I mean, the definition of affordable is, you know, it's it's affordable to whoever is renting it, so. Uh, the people at eighty percent AMI, they're paying thirty percent of their income towards housing, uh if they have that affordable unit. Uh, there is, you know, there is a mismatch in the market for. Eighty percent AMI, um even market rate, you, I mean, you. Even older buildings are starting to go above that thirty percent threshold for people at eighty percent AMI. Even for people that make a hundred and twenty percent AMI. So there's, there's a gap through the entire middle income range as well as the lower income range in terms of. Housing availability that is affordable to to their income bracket.
I think there's, people oftentimes uh confuse median and mean. Median just means half above and half below. That it just that doesn't tell you the what the people below are actually earning. So the mean is usually lower than the median.
So in the last. I don't know what you want to call it, last meeting I attended, uh. We talked about the AMI being a hundred and forty six thousand dollars. So at eighty percent, we're looking at a hundred and sixteen, a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And then thirty percent of that is what they're paying. Per year for rent. So it's got to be about thirty, thirty five thousand. So that's like three grand a month.
Um, for, that would be for, I would suppose probably for a two bedroom then, yes.
Okay, well, at eighty percent.
Uh, it'd be, that would be for a family of four, so. I can pull up the AMIs, uh let me, let me look for it.
That would be like the higher end.
There are six units available at the old Avalon?
Are you saying six, six units, but not six affordable units, six market rate units?
Greg, do you remember, what was the number at the? At the old Avalon, what was the amount of units there?
Um, affordable units, uh I'd have to, I'd have to look it up. Oh, total units, it's about two twenty five.
There's only six out of two twenty five right now.
Yeah, the the vacancy rate, last I checked was, there was no vacancy rate. The data didn't even show it.
And there's still nothing available, so.
Yeah, there's simply not enough housing for the amount of people that are looking for housing.
And there's not enough variety, correct?
Correct.
So I saw that there was an email here, which was the backup. But what about any sort of feasibility studies that are more current um that tell us? What's working in other places in New York or uh what the trends are?
You know, the states or like our area.
No, even in our area, when the state of New York and Westchester County. What are other municipalities doing? And how is that affecting development? Cause I certainly don't want to make it so that everybody's developing, but if we completely stop, that means they're not going to renovate old buildings either. So you want a middle ground where we keep. The structures we have today in better shape, you know, they get renovated as needed, but that we're also providing housing.
Hey Greg? Can you get Morgan to refresh some of the? Information that he did in two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, we can look at that.
And then if you could include for whatever that's ready. Also, the uh the updated AMI, what you have now, if you can make sure that's included.
Yeah, that's that's what's up right now. So for a four person household, it would be twenty nine hundred a month. Uh, at eight, at eighty percent AMI.
Well, Greg provided the board members nineteen, we'll just get, get Morgan wait to work in in Greg's department to redo it. You'll have more information. I mean, fresh.
But I think Sharon's question was what are other communities in Westchester doing? And that might be something.
In regards to, in regards to. But i- is your question in regards to what are they doing in regards to affordable housing or um?
Well, in develop, not like affordable housing like contract here, but affordable housing as far as percentages. Are other communities also increasing their numbers and reducing the AMI? Because that will affect development. So if we can see if other people have already tried it. Then we know where they're comfortable. And we don't have to make it too strict.
Yeah, other other communities certainly have, um but you also have to look at that relative to the floor area ratios that they provide. Because the density is what key, what is key to making a project pencil out. Um, because of the scales, you know, the economies of scales that they are afforded with density.
So with floor, so with the floor area ratio, it's not necessarily per unit. It's the amount of square footage you can get in the building and the more square footage you get in the building. The more units you can create and that allows you to go with a deeper affordability.
Correct, and that's why bonuses were used as part of the TOD, um the moratorium. Uh, and the following law eliminated those bonuses, but. That's kind of the theory, if if you, if you provide the affordable housing, you get this density bonus and that makes it so you're able to actually do the affordable housing.
And we, and we, well, we got rid of the density bonus and required affordable housing, which was the first time that it had been required in the village. And then there was the pandemic and we literally, so, you know.
And I may have forwarded it, but he sent it to me and I hope I sent it to the board. Um, had some information about eliminating parking requirement. From other communities that eliminate parking requirement. So that it's more attractive, so that there's not that space dedicated to parking that a developer could utilize. For increasing the affordable units and making it a more economically viable.
So eliminating, eliminating uh parking from any type of um. Like say limiting park, like parking at the Avalon?
A little bit requirement for parking.
Some, some communities are. Some communities are looking at that.
It's not, not something you would typically see in a suburban um. Location, you know, like the city of Austin recently eliminated their parking requirements. Across the board. Um, but you know, what the board did do in twenty nineteen to their credit was lower the parking requirement for affordable. Housing and that was based on a review of parking. Utilization at various affordable housing developments within the village already. Um, Washingtonville Housing Alliance uh. Properties, uh I actually went out myself with my dog and counted the number of cars that were in their parking lots. Uh, over a, you know, a a mu- a month long period um. And was able to backtrack into a number to recommend to the board. So that's already on the books that it's a, it's a lower requirement for the affordable units. Now, when they're a percentage of a market rate development, it doesn't really help um lower the cost on the development, but. For a hunter tier or, you know, all affordable development, it does help. Lower the cost and it also kind of matches real parking utilization to. Um, the project, you know, you don't want to build a parking lot that's that's not going to be used, you're just wasting resources. It's, it just doesn't make sense.
So Greg, since COVID, where more people are working from home, have we done? Another, yes, whether you want to call it a study or look at the parking lots uh to see if that's increased.
Um, that's an interesting question. I think that that has a lot of merit to it, uh especially for the market rate. Because I think the the kind of like professional jobs uh will tend to have more people working from home. Uh, more service based jobs that tend to pay less. Um, people are required, you know, to go into those jobs typically. Um, obviously, there's. You know, the there there, there's nuance and there's, you know, different examples that could pop up as you, as you look through the data, but. Generally speaking, that that seems to be the trend, so. Um, I don't know if that would be compelling. I I don't know if the data would compel a change to the affordable requirements, but. Um, it's something to look at for market rate parking requirements, certainly. And and I guess when you think about residential too, um. When you're doing the parking requirements, you're thinking about the overnight parking. So there shouldn't really be an impact um. Cause you're, you're really concerned about the overnight parking, so there, when you make a new development and it's under the current regs. You're really accommodating for the cars that people have that they'll be bringing home and keeping there overnight. So even if they're home the next day, it's fine if if the car is still parked in the lot, there should be enough. Enough um supply for that circumstance.
So what do we do?
Firstly, I'm okay with if if it is going to um increase it. I'm okay with increasing it, but of course, if, you know, with Sharon's suggestion of looking at the other municipalities. Um, to see what they're doing, but um if it, you know, in terms of, is it going to? Deter people from developing in our community, so be it. I say so be it, but if it's going to um help others, then. So be it.
I think, I think something, I just, I have to, I have to say this, just so it's on the record. I think if if there's a do nothing approach. I think that rents will go up for everyone. Um, I I, that's my professional opinion, um, you know, it's up to the board to, you know, to make these policy decisions, so I'm, I'm putting that out there. But when, when you don't accommodate, you know, the growing demand um at all income levels. The do nothing approach will just make naturally occurring. How, you know, potentially more affordable housing, older buildings, just that much more expensive. Over time, so I just, I need to at least put that on the record. And that's it.
Because people are 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 capable, um our, our older pre-war buildings are. They're able to raise their rents and not offer any type of externity to their buildings. And people are being allowed to do so and at what cost.
So so what what do we want to do with this?
Well, I'm public hearing.
Well, well, I mean, Greg's, Greg and Morgan are going to provide more information, so if.
We have to give Greg and Morgan a little bit of time to come back, so you have some additional information. Right, so if you want to, if you want to maybe.
So that'd be like February?
Yeah, February, first, that that works.
Of course, meeting in February.
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Greg?
That works for me.
Thank you.
Uh, we can also put together some affordable housing data to, like, in addition to just the kind of pro forma analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, yeah, this is a ADUs, uh and the the, you know. People get upset when you 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 mentioned it, but last year the uh the governor uh tried to uh prevent. All localities from doing anything with ADUs and 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 really take away our ability to regulate them. Truth is, they exist. And um they're largely. Not regulated from what I can see, or 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 not, not uh not regulated specifically by um by definition. So I'm suggesting that we uh that we exercise the authority that we have. And and do that. And what uh what I'm recommending is that we figure a way to legalize the grandfathered ADUs. Uh, which are now in single family zones and they exist, I've seen them. Uh, to expand the creation of new ADUs under guidelines to be determined by this board. Uh, find out, uh decide what it is that we we would like and where we would not like it. And to create a path for compliance to whatever the unspecified number of illegal ADUs that already exist here. And uh when I asked Greg about this, uh we couldn't even venture a guess, am I correct? Do I uh, do I characterize that correctly, Greg?
I mean, i- if we knew where they were, there would be enforcement actions.
So um uh we we, what we want to do is give these uh these uh uh units a path to compliance. Um, uh as opposed to just uh. Creating an underground um housing economy. So in any event, I I think I'm going to suggest that. That uh uh that we address this perhaps in March. Um, uh when we're on the other side of the uh, the uh current uh. Uh, uh discussion about the uh. Uh, about hunter tier and um. Uh, and 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 deal with it then, but um but what brought it to my attention was the fact that uh. Uh, people are suing each other over these things and us. And uh they exist and uh and and we're not, we're pretending, I don't know, we're, we're, we're just. We're just not addressing it and uh the, we have the authority. The state did not take it away and I think we need to use it and and exercise our uh our control over this uh this part of the housing market. And and find out what we want to do. I don't think it's it's much of an answer to um. To affordable housing. I think it'll have a marginal impact at best, but I think we we do need to uh address it and and make it clear where we stand. On these units, so um I would uh, I would hope that we could uh put it up for um. Or or ask for something from the staff, uh perhaps in March. Does March sound reasonable, Greg?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, uh uh and 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 we could begin the discussion around that. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think you might start, there's about. At least fifteen communities in Westchester that have adopted ADU laws, so you might want to start with that and see. See what they um see, when they adopted them and um.
And the county has a, has a model, yeah. The county has a model ordinance that's attached in backup. Uh, so, but I I, but you know, our community has very specific uh. Circumstances and I I think we we would probably want to deal with it uh differently in the flood zone that outside. You know, there's a number of things we'd want to get into, but uh it's clearly a problem. Uh, so. I think we should, we should deal with it.
Mayor, these bullet points have three separate policies, Lou, that's what you're talking about?
Well, that, th- this is just off the top of my head.
Um, well, they seem separate.
Okay.
They seem like they're enforcement's one thing. Grandfathering in. Another.
Yeah, I mean, once the, the grandfathered units are grandfathered already, I mean, and in the neighborhoods where they exist. Does it make sense? They've been there for a long time. Does it make sense to tell everybody else, the people that live next door, that they couldn't do the same thing? That's, that's.
Yeah, but you want to legalize grandfathered ADUs, they're grandfathered.
Okay, so they are, they are legalized, so maybe that's, that's not worded very well, perhaps.
Well, if they're pre-existing non-conforming units, they're legal units.
That's what they are.
They're not illegal, they're pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah, they're always going to be that.
Right, you can't, you can't require them to come into a different kind of compliance unless they choose to make. A substantial modification.
I mean, there was.
Legal ones, okay.
This isn't necessarily a path to finding illegal units because. The illegal units are, it it, as Greg said, if if the village knew where they were, their enforcement actions would be taken.
But I'm I'm thinking about, you know, the granny flats, the uh, the whatever you want to call them, the the guest houses. The um. The, you know, what? Yeah, you know, uh and um.
A lot of legal stuff.
Yes, a lot of legal stuff.
Pre-existing non-conforming piece of property, you could tell them they have to. If if there's a, if, let's say there's a two family house in my neighborhood that pre-exists the nineteen sixty, there's been a two family house since nineteen sixty eight. We could just tell them they can no longer be a two family house.
Can everybody hear? I could barely hear you, I'm sorry.
You have the boom mic on?
Yes.
Alright, he's got, he can hear. Alright, he's got, he can hear.
So I I don't know if you're familiar with Pelamater, where the BJ's is in Pelamater. That was an old industrial area. Twenty-something years ago, I wrote a law for the village of Pelamater. That required the all the non-conforming units to be discontinued within five years unless they could show that they couldn't make a reasonable return. The owner of that property couldn't show that he couldn't make a reasonable return, he was forced to discontinue that and it took a while, discontinue the old industrial use and here it took a while. I'm not saying you want to do that, I was just commenting on who said you couldn't do it. You probably could.
Well, I mean, I I'm not saying that there's, you know, there are a lot of, there are a lot of, we have single-family zones, two-family zones, we have a lot of, you know, a lot of old houses that have been two-family houses for, you know, a hundred years. I'm not suggesting that you make that kind of a change, but I guess what I'm saying is and an ADU law doesn't do anything to legalize a unit that's not legal. Because as Greg said, if we don't know it's an illegal unit, it's not being brought into conformance, so an ADU law.
Well, if it's illegal, if it's an existing illegal unit, not a, not one that's a prior law for non-conforming use. If it's an existing illegal unit and it satisfies the requirements under the new law, can it be legalized?
Right, and I think that's what that's what if 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 anybody finds out about it, I think that's what Lou was talking about.
So that's it, I would I would like to, you know, address that in March.
What would you like from the staff, do you want anything from the legal department that, or you want planning?
A model, a model ordinance that will accomplish the things that that are outlined there.
Do you want to support what the model, the county model ordinance prepares as a local law for the village?
No, I don't think we're that far along.
I don't think so, I think before you do this, I would look at look at the other communities and have done it, see how it works.
Sanjita Harry Town did it, Bedford did it.
Yeah, we want to know what the other fifteen committees.
Okay, so let's let's.
I'll send it to you.
If we say there was a pathway to legalization, we have to define what the parameter of the pathway would be. Yeah. Yeah.
Some communities might be relevant to ours, some communities might not, but I think you need to see what their experience, what they did and what their experience was before we embark on this, their layout.
Yeah, because I mean, what we're doing right now is just like.
I know Hastings has done it, I'm not, there is, there's a, there's, I know Hastings has done it.
Porchester technically has it on their books, but I don't think they've ever received an application for one.
Alright. That's it, that's good, that's all I want.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we so we want to set a time when we would expect to discuss this in March.
We said the beginning of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the last one, beginning of February. So.
First meeting in March?
Is that around budget season, it's right?
Yeah, ten to budget has to be filed by March twenty.
Yeah, so it's in between.
Budget work sessions happen in April.
Oh. But they'll be working on the budget before then.
It was in the March last year. It was towards the end of end of March going into April, that's what it was.
So the candidate has to be posted by twentieth, and then typically there's a budget introduction meeting shortly after that, so whatever the last meeting of March is, but did you say the last meeting, twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
And the work session. But the beginning of March sounds fine, that's.
Yeah, I just I just want to discuss, I want to get feedback from the community and and find out what it is that we we need to do, I know people have anxiety over this, I know, but I it's not like it doesn't exist already.
No, but I think the more information we share.
Yeah.
And the more we can listen to the concerns, excuse me, the concerns of the community. You know, the easier it'll be to
Yeah.
Have that conversation.
Are you trying to have a public hearing before?
Once he has that information.
Alright, so first meeting in March?
Yes, that is the eleventh.
Got it.
Okay. The next one is the executive search for a village manager. Jerry has put in his retirement effective April fifth. Jerry, thank you for your years of service, particularly during COVID, I really appreciate it.
The date all the time, I appreciate that.
But thank you for all your years of service. So basically, we have to find a search firm.
Yes, using the same search firm that possibly got on the phone. Because that's that's, I think that's all we have, you know, the, I think we have to interview few search firms and make the decision about who
Yes.
We're comfortable with.
Okay, so is there another search firm?
Tom and Maronic, you know, did a search, so I'm happy to get, and I did get a list of search firms when we were looking for an attorney, for a full-time village attorney. So I'm happy to get a list and circulate it to you all. Maybe not tomorrow, but I will.
Alright, so we're gonna get a list, we'll narrow it down, and then we'll move forward with a particular search firm.
And and I understand that we've already gotten inquiries about the job.
Okay, thank you. G is Lo Sap, which was brought to us at the last meeting, I believe, for the fire department. For a length of service award program, I had asked Chief Barney to provide more information. I see it's in the packet, but I don't believe anyone's had a chance to review it, I know I have not.
What, the entire?
Yeah, the entire thing. So we have it pushed off till January twenty-second. No, it's pushed off till the twenty-second, but if we could read the information they sent, so we're ready to have that conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't, we, that's all.
Oh, did you?
The bulk of it, right?
That's just less work.
Thank you for coming.
I guess this is Jerry or Jerry and Gino. Design services proposal for old post-road pedestrian and drainage improvements.
The only, the only thing I'll say before you know get that there is that this, this originally was brought to us as a sidewalk project. Where many kids from Oriente walking to the high school are walking in a street. What separates them from the cars is they painted yellow line. So it was brought to us as a concern from the residents regarding a sidewalk, adding a sidewalk and curb. That has some type of type of configuration for cars that are traveling. And then in Ida, after Ida, during Ida, we came. This location on Old Post Road. Based on a review, a review of storm maps encompasses a rather large drainage area, drainage basin. Residents of Fairway Green when they complained, numerous residents have been flooded at the last meeting, I did show some video of water during the storm, we had a sparrow blowing off fresh basins. So what I've spoken to KRF to perform a preliminary stormwater drainage analysis of the area. It consists of a limited survey. We'll also be doing some stormwater floor monitoring and give us an idea of how much what what kind of waters moved to the system, a full hydraulic hydraulic analysis of the area. At the end, we'll we'll speak with them about some recommendations for improvements or upsizing some of the stormwater infrastructure in the area that, from my opinion, looks like it is largely possibly undersized. You know, some of these storms are becoming more frequent, some of these larger storms are dumping large amounts of water in a shorter period of time, so that's kind of overwhelming our system, we're never really designed to that capacity.
I have a few questions. Yeah, so on the first page of the request form, it says that it says a useful life of a hundred years. Does that mean the expected life of it, which is what it says, or is that using the hundred-year storm model?
No, no, I mean, that that's basically, that's a typical estimate for anything that's put into the ground, whether it's, you know, I think it's probably after piping or reinforced concrete piping. Eventually, it's gonna degrade over time, it's gonna need to be repaired or replaced.
It also says on here pedestrian and drainage improvements, so I see the drainage improvements. I got phone calls this week and emails from people who were talking about the speed bumps that were put up, that there were three put up, but there's still a problem in in the middle section, I guess, and wondering if we were gonna be adding the other two, because I guess they had a conversation with the prior male. So is this including, I I may, might have to go back through it, I've not been feeling great. Are we addressing both things or just the drainage?
This this. Drainage, but they have to be in a sidewalk. The speed bumps, I think were tapped out on speed bumps based on the specs that our traffic engineer gave us, we can't add any more speed bumps.
Okay.
There there are certain guidelines that need to follow by to put the speed bumps in place, they can't be up a hundred feet of the of an intersection on a driveway. Far enough away from a fire hydrant, so we have to look, driving up and down, I've walked up and down Old Post Road a few times. Three locations that were selected were, I just, just conformed
Okay.
To those locations, so there's there's no other location to put them. But the pedestrian is certainly sidewalks.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Fairway Green side.
And I just don't remember, I'm sorry, is any part of the Fairway Greens, is that a private road?
And and we have drainage easements for.
No, for the drainage, I really meant.
No, yeah, we have we have easements for the drainage.
Okay.
So are we allowed, I mean, this, we've gotten into heated debates about this before. Can we make sure, make have our attorney make sure that we have the ability to do drainage improvements on private property? In this instance, like that we've got all those agreements, because I can see this could be a debate.
Improvements are done outside, not.
No, no, that's that's pedestrian walkways outside on Old Post Road, but the drainage has some easement on their property.
We do, we do have a map of the drainage, I could share that with you.
Yeah, and and, yeah, remember the.
And the cost on here is just for the scope of work, for the design?
The cost of there of the fifty-six thousand is there for the phase one, fifty-four. The drainage analysis, the second phase is two, twenty-four, that is for full design of sidewalks.
That's the two million dollars?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
No, and the total, the project.
No, the total project costs.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was just, that was an estimate based on an engineer's estimate from a cost of construction for new sidewalks on Old Post Road, correct?
So from beginning to end, we're looking at probably two and a half million? With a little bit of overage of, you know, because it's not gonna happen today.
Just for the sidewalks, I think it'd be about two and a half mil, two and a half million dollars.
So with these. Looking at closer to three.
Additional drainage improvements, possibly closer to three million.
Three million dollars.
So has there been any grants that we could apply for, or have we gotten anything?
It would be very difficult to get grants for this location, because you know, it's a area in the Oriente, Oriente section of the village, which is Yeah, you talk about the area median income. This is on the high end. You would find so not not attractive to grant.
So I've spoken to residents here and I understand the depth of the problem. I have a concern, I have a question, maybe it goes to Jerry, I'm not sure. This seems to be a newer issue with the flooding or, you know, the water coming out?
It's only two years.
Right. And we have, as we started out the conversation today, we have a flood mitigation committee that is expecting us to do some work to alleviate the bigger flooding needs in other areas. So.
Traditional flood area?
I'm sorry? Yes, yes. And so is there a reason that we're prioritizing this project for flood mitigation, or is it because of the underutilization? Sorry, that wasn't the right word, but go ahead.
The combination of the pedestrian requests that we've had for the past four or five years and the order for the kids walking to the school.
Okay.
If we're gonna put sidewalks, then we have to add drainage to the street that doesn't currently exist.
Okay.
That's why we put together.
Okay.
Right, the real public safety concern is the pedestrians. The the ability for us to put sidewalks so that the kids have a safe sidewalk to walk to school with.
Okay.
From Oriente to the. If we're doing sidewalks and putting in curvings, that's the time to put in drainage. I think there were two or three units in Fairway Green that were flooded during Ida. But there's there were, there were units, there were properties flooded all over the village that never flooded before. So it's the same situation.
It was a different kind of.
I think it, you know, two, two things, first, the the drainage area is not just Fairway Green, it is a larger drainage area that goes into Fairway Green. And and second, the, it would be a similar project approach as to what we did this summer, or last summer, now we're in twenty twenty-four. At the, at the Mamaroneck Avenue School, where we did a sidewalk project and then we incorporated drainage improvements that were required as a result of Ida. So, you know, we were able to, and because typically, you know, you don't need two separate contractors for sidewalk work and drainage work. They could all do the same, any contractor does sidewalk work, does drainage work.
That's why the job, Mayor, was put together, as far as priority. There may be other areas that we're addressing, that would be more traditional flooded areas, but. Traditional flooding areas also encompass a lot of the river flooding. This is, this is primarily is stormwater. That's all within that large drainage area.
It's the infrastructure work and.
So the flooding component is fairly recent. The need for the project predates its arrival. Okay, there we go.
In order to put in the sidewalks, we're gonna easements on all those property, we're gonna have to go onto people's properties.
Yeah, Old Post Road is a public street.
No, I know, but like their front yard is gonna end up having a sidewalk.
No, no, because on the side of Fairway, there's more.
And.
I talked about aesthetically, I guess.
And and also, I think we could, we would probably build a sidewalk within the area that's currently marked off of the line. Because it's it's a wide enough road to accommodate one-way traffic and pedestrian traffic.
You're right. But you're gonna say there's a an area five foot that's that's delineated for kids to walk in the street.
But it's not.
That would be potentially the sidewalk.
But it's not marked out all the way down, the whole, the whole street.
Wouldn't that be better for like bikes or something, let's take it over?
Mike, I'm not, it's still a one-way, very wide street.
Well, you you need, so the reason it's five foot is because if you're painting an area on a roadway. You need five feet to allow for two-way pedestrian traffic on a one-way road. If we had a sidewalk, it wouldn't need to be as wide, I mean, we could maybe look at a complete streets concept there. I don't know if we can accomplish that, but something we can certainly look at.
I think we should consider, I mean, that seems like, like if we're doing all this work, that's like the, that's that's one place where we could actually put a bike now.
Right, pretty easily.
And and that might open us to some grant funding.
And and just to point out that actually, the first email I got about sidewalks on Old Post Road was in twenty sixteen. So we've been getting those for quite some time.
And they were, they were probably being sent before you were working here.
You're, you're probably right.
I also think that, you know, Senators Mayor and Senator Harkam are really pushing, and I think we should all help them to 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 create an Office of Sustainability at the state level. And to fund it with five hundred million dollars this coming budget cycle and it the and the projects are for kind of infrastructure that helps, you know, helps with flooding. So it's not just riverine flooding, but it's flooding towards the kinds of situations that are just in stormwater systems that aren't, don't have capacity, so I think as we think about projects, we should think about projects that might line up for that the way, because we've done very well with with funding for for the similar kind of funding for our INI, for our sewers. Uh with funding for for the similar kind of funding for our INI, for our sewers.
Yeah.
So we're talking about the that grant more in depth at the next night com, I think it's. I'll be going to that one, so I can bring back any information. And well, it's the grant, and they were, they were talking, there's a lot of infrastructure grants that they're gonna be. Um uh uh infrastructure and greenway type of grants that are gonna be posed or be gonna talk discussed. At the next night com, so I was looking forward to that.
Do you know, Mayor, if I could, do you know if there was flooding prior to Ida over there, that? Did you ever talk to the residents about that?
There are residents behind you.
Since Ida.
And was this already included in any kind of budgeting or no?
Yeah.
Sidewalks, yes. Drainage, no.
Sidewalks is in the capital plan, not the drain.
Capital plan, was that part of the budget though, or that's just?
No, it it is part of the capital plan.
Yeah, we didn't have an amount that went with it, we sort of adopted this, we adopted a list.
Actually, I think I included the the CIP, I think it was like a million and a half that we budgeted. In the backup to this item, I I think I may have included. Project worksheet.
But the question is, when did and did that have, was drainage part of what we were looking at in February, I don't think so, February, that's brand new, yeah.
And one thing should not be done without the other, or can't be done without the other?
No, if you're gonna put sidewalks, you gotta put drainage.
Okay.
If you're, it's either all or nothing.
Yeah, if you have you put the sidewalk, you're gonna add additional stormwater.
Yeah, you have the worksheet here?
I think I'm, I think I included, I can't recall. Plus, I think it was just for the sidewalk, I think it was, I think it was one point six million, two million? It's probably with design and instruction inspection, all that.
So but it that's, but but that's not in this budget cycle, I mean, I think that's the thing like, so we're.
We have for twenty three, twenty four. That's when it was proposed to be.
But not to be completed, I mean.
No.
We would initiate design this year and then.
Next year for completion.
You know, what type, kind of timeline are we looking at if we were to go through with this?
Uh we can proceed with the uh stormwater analysis and have something done. With the flow monitoring, I'd like to hit the the spring months, so we can get some good data, um probably talk about the end of May. And if we start moving forward, those are recommendations, we could probably have something completed uh towards the end of twenty twenty four. And then put something up to date for over the spring of twenty twenty five. Uh it's gonna be a, uh depending on how how complex the drainage is, sidewalks will take maybe two months. Uh and the drainage uh anywhere possibly from. Sixty months, possibly a little sooner than that, and flexing, you know, if we're going through an easement, um. It would be a fair way green, uh but something we're completely about the end of twenty, maybe the bottom twenty five.
So we're not looking at this year's budget, we're really looking at twenty four, twenty five?
The engineering for.
The engineer, right, but that's a smaller portion. And it actually could go twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six, because there would be some expenses in the next fiscal.
It gives us time to also apply for grants. It can give us time to apply for grants.
If you had. To the school, I agree.
For sidewalk safety, go to school?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, safe routes, safe routes to school, um I said, if we're able to incorporate some sort of complete streets. Aspect that, you know, there's um.
And I think it it will feed into this resiliency. Funding, which I think it, you know, it it that has the benefit of being important to people all over the place, not just. Communities like ours that are coastal or riverine, but it's it's it's, you know, parkways and. And highways are just flooding in in tremendous storms now, so that's how the, that's how the sewer infrastructure got funded, because. All up, it was useful all over the state, and I think this is the same kind of thing, so we might be ahead of the curve in having a project ready to go.
Yeah, so typically, if a project is ready to go, if you've done some study, done some work, then that gives you a higher rating as far as being. Being rated with with other municipalities across the state, that's why we have the money for the, to work, because we have done a lot of work, shown the need.
We were ready to go.
They're right.
Yeah.
Alright, so what are the next steps for this? I think we'll be getting some funding for it, so.
The next regular meeting.
Yeah.
So January twenty second?
Yeah.
Alright, we're pushing that to January twenty second to the regular meeting.
Yeah, I would, can Bob answer his question that, you know, he was ready, he's ready.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Bob.
The uh issue is now whether it's on private property or not, the system, the village system or not a village system, there are certainly places where. Village stormwater runs across private property, because they have to do that to accomplish the goals of the village's drainage. There'll be an easement for that, rights in property to allow that to happen, so this is all part of the village's drainage.
The village constructed these.
Right.
Okay. And when Fairway Green was developed.
They tied into it, okay. Alright. Thanks, great. Last of the old business. Waiving permit and or escrow fee for home elevation projects, Jerry?
So there are um. Opportunities for residents to be able to raise their um their structure to um. Help with um the issues with the flooding and their repeated flooding and what it was. And they're on the hook for at least ten percent of maybe a two to three hundred thousand dollar. Minimum, two to three hundred thousand dollar call. Um that's the best scenario, ten percent, worst scenario is twenty five percent, right? So there's some skin in the game for those individuals who want to raise their properties. So it would be potentially beneficial for them if we consider waiving the permitting fees. Uh like we've done in other situations where people are impacted by flooding. These are certainly people impacted by flooding, um and they're trying to do something about it. So if there's a viable application for raising a structure on the property. Uh I think we should consider waiving the fees to help them out, since they have to kick in money on their own, it's not free for them, based on. Funding that Mr. Shonoff has been able to identify and ask for.
What what are, what are, what kind of fees are we talking about?
Yeah, building permits, I mean, a couple of thousand dollars, nothing crazy.
They would still file the permit, they just wouldn't have to pay the fee.
Yeah, I would file, I'd have to make sure everything is so we can do the inspections and all of that stuff, um but um we would just wait it fall.
Also in the past is when there's been a um a flood event, uh we've waived fees for people. Needing to recover from said flood event.
We did that during Ida, it's a little different.
Uh it's a little different, but it's.
Can we get ahead of the flood?
People flood and they're doing something this, you know, ultimately. The more houses that are elevated, the less intense our emergency responses.
And it lets people pays out.
Right.
That's why people wants to have the money.
To do this.
I think this is a no-brainer.
I'm, but but the other question is about the waterworks fee, and I don't know, that's that's in this email, is there anything we can do to encourage the waterworks? Well, I mean, can we?
They can ask, so the resident can ask, but we can't really, we don't control that fee. But the resident, I think a resident recently has asked and was successful, so the resident can ask the. Of the world.
Okay, so we just.
At the end of the day, the waterworks is, and the waterwork committee is the uh.
So we have to, one have to adopt the local law, allowing for waiver fees. We have to work on the circumstances, Jerry, which you want.
Sure, to do that. The detail of the home elevation, as we've told them.
Yeah, whatever the conditions are.
Okay.
And what about the 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 man who was who the consultant who was gonna help the village learn how to do this?
Still working on scope. He was out on business.
So I asked for a scope, you're supposed to get to me the end of last week, I haven't gotten it yet, though.
It it just seems like anything we can do to encourage this.
Does anybody have any questions, or are we okay with this?
I was just saying, I think what in regards to the waterworks, they were just asking uh for advocacy, they knew that that we don't have control, but just for advocacy. Since one of us, I think the mayor sits on.
I do, but it wasn't, hasn't been brought to us.
What, from the resident?
Right, when I was at the last P board meetings, I know nothing about this, so I could ask.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't think that you were supposed to know.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like him, but I can, I can follow up.
Thought germinated in our head at the end of November, early December, so it hasn't been kicking around that long.
Do we have a full thirty minute executive?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, yeah, we're gonna jump to three first. Um just due to time, we're gonna go to items for tonight's regular meeting. Resolution authorizing the submittal of a transit transportation alternatives grant to improve the Mamaroneck Avenue, Mount Pleasant Avenue. Halsted Avenue intersection.
That's where I did my final white.
So uh. Uh it's a pretty complex intersection, we've had many requests over the years. Uh to uh inst- have a crosswalk across Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Yes.
The issue is, Mount Pleasant Avenue is a county-owned roadway, they would have to give us permission to do that. Uh the issue is the way the traffic flows at that intersection. Because it's a complex intersection with multiple roadways entering, there's always an opportunity for traffic. To be making a turning movement onto Mount Pleasant Avenue, regardless of where everyone stands in the phase of the traffic signal. So uh we've worked with the county, developed an alternative which they have a a a concept they've approved. Uh and we're looking to apply for a grant from New York State under their Transportation Alternatives Program. Uh the, this would entail kind of uh partscaping uh the intersection. Uh replacement of the traffic signal, which is uh kind of complex, because the traffic signal. At that intersection, in addition to the intersections on. Uh I guess we're at the south side of the railroad bridge, also controls the traffic light at Wait and uh Mamaroneck Avenue. Um and, you know, this we believe would allow us the opportunity to have that. Uh crosswalk across Mount Pleasant, being a a major benefit for pedestrians, because technically. I know this doesn't happen, but uh if you wanted to cross from Smash Burger to TCD. Which is across the street of Mount Pleasant Avenue, you would literally, to do it properly, you'd have to cross the entire.
Yeah.
Make it two hundred, well, two hundred and seventy degrees around the intersection.
And and I I've said this before, whatever happens at that intersection, needs to address two things, that's one of them, crossing Mount Pleasant. And the other thing is, it could be something to discourage trucks from ramming into the uh into the. I i i into the 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 trestle. I think it's a roundabout, I'm not an expert, I I think a roundabout could could fix it, but 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 certainly, anything, any fix for that intersection. That doesn't take care of those two problems is is is.
Yeah, I mean, we we we've looked at signage, um I mean, unfortunately, the, a truck. Getting stuck at Mamaroneck Avenue Railroad Bridge is a popular meme, actually.
Yes.
Which I've seen more than once.
They get it last week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um but um I I think there are other issues at play, like uh truck drivers using regular. GPS instead of commercial-grade GPS, which it's pretty difficult to uh uh enforce that, and then. Uh people driving U-Haul trucks that they just don't know, um but um, you know, we've looked at that, I think we have some. Signage alternatives that we're trying to uh implement as well.
What about a a wa- a warning barrier, something with with chains hanging, where they would hit, I mean, it 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 just. Just to let them know that they're gonna hit something before they hit it.
I don't even think you have this.
I mean.
It's it's tight, it's.
I know it's tight, but.
They already hit it by the time they hit.
I I mean, whatever.
So um the grant is due tomorrow, I I tried to have this ready for the last meeting, but, you know, it it was, it was a tight timeframe, because. Trying to get everything done a month in advance of the grant being due is a little difficult.
I think it's fine, but I have a question, why is it um a carbon reduction program?
Like, because the the uh upgrading the sig- the signals uh is. So updating the signal, and, you know, we looked at um. We had looked at a plan to have better uh operation of our signals, and I think I may have distributed a.
Operation of the signals or or less standing of vehicles that are.
Well, both, both actually, you know, we've, long term, we we've uh recommended what they call a. Active control traffic system, which allows you to uh uh manipulate the timing during certain times of the day. So you have more flow, so it, because like I said, we, you know, between, you know, ten AM and two PM. There's usually not much of an issue, and it's really the morning and afternoon appearance. As I said, the the grant is due tomorrow, um I did email the board about a correction to the grant budget, which I just had updated today, and I. Have a uh a substitute resolution uh with the correct total, and then I can distribute that to you for tonight.
Thank you.
This is gonna be up on, it's gonna be at eight o'clock.
Yep, alright.
Contract renewal for grant writing services.
So it's typically um in years past, Mayor, um we paid more than what we. Than what we um received in uh grant awards, that was completely blown out of the water several years ago. Received about ten million dollars in the span of like eighteen months, um so it's very helpful, uh just recently. Um we've provided you the reports, and in the report, in the reports, the monthly reports is a um. Is a report from all the brighter, and they've, they've already been able to secure this year, um not this year. Last year, they secured forty five thousand, forty six thousand dollars.
Forty, forty eight, it's on backup tonight, too.
Yeah, and and I think.
All work, service, uh they work really well with us, we work very closely with them, at least Dan and staff.
Yeah, and I think we, uh in the last couple of weeks, we we received notification of two grant awards.
Yeah.
That is not on this.
I don't believe so.
So we've been pretty well with them, I I think it's a reasonable rate.
And they're not raising it?
No.
I think it's fine, it would, it would just in general, if we could do it like, I mean, we're doing it tonight for tonight, maybe if we can do it ahead of time.
In the November, December time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think it was just the timeframe in which we got the extension agreement, and we only have the one meeting in December and.
Does provide a report every month.
Yeah.
So we pay them per month, we don't pay them based on how many grants they write or get.
Per month.
Come on.
We drive that, we ride, kind of like, can we ask for this, for that, we drive that.
Yeah, I think uh spare do the one percent of ten million dollars.
Anybody have any questions? Retaining. Expanding membership on the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee. While we were preparing for the, was it the organizational meeting? Uh we determined that many of the volunteers on the FMAC are from. One very large area, I wanted to make sure we were expanding. The committee to bring in people from other areas that are starting to flood, that um might have fewer people but are flooding. And so we want to move that from, I believe it's seven to nine, is that correct? So, um we've already discussed it, uh so do we have any other questions for ourselves? Okay, perfect.
And there's a, there's a resolution to put it on tonight.
Yeah, we're putting it on tonight to do the rest, yeah. Okay, and then retainer agreement for the village attorney. That we will be discussing in order to have an attorney. Any other questions? Um we don't have a lot of time left.
It's, I just, this rule, the only change is that the retainer is going up.
Two point five percent?
Three hundred and twenty, two and a half percent, and that's, otherwise, there's no change for the previous contract.
Um, E, hold on, yeah, okay. We're gonna skip to E because we're on limited time, proposal to design curb extension at Union and Tompkins. Oh, uh I guess we're not, because.
But um, can, Dan, can you explain that, please?
Yeah, um uh last year, we had residents uh appear before the Traffic Commission to discuss. Uh traffic safety issues on the Union Avenue corridor. Uh, and uh, the intersection with Tompkins Avenue. The village agreed to uh, do certain things. Uh, we are uh, waiting for Con Ed to finish uh, work that they're doing right now. Uh, on uh, you, on Union Avenue before you finalize everything. Uh, one of the recommendations was to uh, tighten the turning radius at the intersection of Tompkins and Union Avenue. Um, a couple of years ago, we had uh, looked at this. And uh, we had painted or hatched out an area to better uh, direct traffic so that they were uh, making a tighter turn by uh, putting a hatched area where uh, drivers would naturally not, you know, uh, travel into. Um, anecdotally, we, we've heard that uh, uh, people are not uh, adhering to our hatched area and can, continue to make that uh, that turn with a higher rate of speed than would normally be considered safe. So, uh, we're looking at the physical uh, project to extend or redesign the curb, uh, bring it out. Uh, it would also involve some minor drainage work. Uh, the proposal, uh, I believe was for thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, and then, you know, I, I don't have a estimate for construction, but, you know, typically, we, we tend to think that design is about ten percent of a project cost. So, you know, we're probably closer to four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars when everything was done. Uh, which would include design, construction, and construction inspection. So, I wanted to review that with the board, uh, and uh, what are the thoughts of whether, uh, moving forward?
So Mayor, if I can.
Yeah, we talked about this.
But, um, I don't know if we got any, did you ever get any accident information from the chief regarding this location? Because the, when we met with the pro- when we met with the residents of the I think they want, they're asking for some redesign to slow down the cars because they'll be at a higher rate of speed after they make the curb. And they're looking to really bring down the speed on Union, which is pretty traditional country.
Especially now with the.
Well, I say even more so with the Tompkins Avenue Bridge being taken out now. Everybody makes that right turn.
I can't remember where uh, the accident took place, like, I guess it was to get like September or something like that, but there, was it on Union or? It was on Union. It was in the middle. Okay, so it wasn't on Tompkins, but still.
I think if we put the plastic, um, barricades that, um, so that people that traditionally get hit and knocked over, if we do that for us, as maybe a traffic calming. I think we could maybe bring that speed down a little bit.
Well, my concern I have is just, it's not a capital plan. I mean, this is, and this is, and, and, and you know, maybe, you know, one of the things we do in adopting a capital plan is have like a discretionary fund for something like, you know, this is our cap. And this is what we plan on spending, and there's this gap for emergencies, but how does this, you know, the, the Oriental sidewalk has been really, since three years before I was running, it was an issue. So it's, it's almost ten years. And it's just getting done, and I'm not, you know, I mean, this is my neighborhood. I completely understand this, but I feel like again, it, like, we have to, we have a capital plans. And how do we prioritize?
I actually, I, I walk my dogs down this area sometimes. And I understand there is a lot of speeding there. I have no argument with that. I don't know if extending the sidewalk is the only or best way to address it. Possibly putting the, um.
I'd like to put the poles there so people hit them and instead of, I'd like to try that, um.
You mean so that they can go around them and it's slowed down?
Yeah, go around them, um, and see if that brings down the speed, because we do have data with us, with our speed, uh, speed trailer.
Right.
We do have data, like to maybe bring that data back.
Okay.
Bring that speed trailer back, do it for another thirty days, see if things have changed a little bit.
But isn't that ahead of it? Far enough that it might not change?
Yeah.
Cause you hit that, you hit that speed at the corner of Tompkins and Beach, it starts already tracking you, and Union is well past that.
It is, right, so, so.
So are you gonna move it, or are you gonna?
No, I put it on Union, in the, on the side where you can park cars, but facing this way.
Got it, okay.
Right, so that I would track the cars going around the curb. That's ideally what I'd wanna do.
Okay.
So, I, I, I can, I can talk to our traffic engineer about some alternatives.
Yeah.
I think we need to try that at the end.
Yeah, I.
Okay, um, I know we have a request to go to executive session. Do you wanna come back to these new items later if we finish our lineup?
I'm gonna suggest that, that we don't really need executive session for B. Um, I, I don't think there's anything there that, that we can't talk about in public.
What do you?
Well, we're going into.
We have to go.
Yeah, alright, alright.
Well, I mean, we are up anyone motions?
Don't mean, go ahead, read the motion, okay. So, I make a motion to go into, um, executive session under one oh one, one oh five one H. Um, purchase of properties, it's under one oh one under one oh five one F to discuss, um, appointments to the Arts Council, Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee, and Village Prosecutor. Um, under one oh one, under one oh five one D to discuss litigation, Save the Sound versus the Village of Mamaronek. And, um, the litigation Grasso, the, the Village of Mamaronek.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we really don't need, uh, to, to go with executive session for one oh five one F, uh, just not necessary.
I've made the motion.
A second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we're gonna go into executive session. I'm down to the crappy candy list because I ran out of Ricola, Ricola, whatever they are, those ones, they were running, they were out at every store I went to. I went through the whole bag. So I'm not contagious anymore, but I'm just still getting rid of this thing. Yeah, yeah, so I still have like a, like this dry spot right there.
I haven't, I've never, that many pop-ups in my life.
It's not like I want them, I just, I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, I know, me too.
Thank you.
We've got a, um, small business owner. The long pole and the tent, I believe, some of the zoning changes that Greg Cutler has proposed. And I'm just waiting for an opportunity for the board to at least direct the village attorney to start drafting those zoning changes. It was for daycare, childcare.
We haven't decided to do that, I don't think, though.
I know that, correct, but I know that the memo was put together at the seventh, eleventh meeting, and
Okay.
The actual changes suggested by Craig, I think they presented to this. So I saw my website.
Okay, I, um.
So I was just.
I will tell you, I mean, you always have public comment when we get to the next meeting at eight o'clock. Um, I have to get into executive. I know he sent me something, I just, I'm getting a lot of email.
Yeah, and I thought he was, I thought Greg was actually gonna present.
No, yeah, I'm not aware of him presenting anything tonight. He, I mean, I know we've got four and a half before, but I haven't seen a presentation on like what it will do for C one and what, you know, I, I don't know yet. So, you know, if you wanna talk about it, you'll have your.
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we started. We were shot almost. This is. He's pregnant states are young. I was just on this. So it was I had to get on my. Because they're built into the same thing. The problem is not like. But then they were like they said. But now he's out. He said all the function.
Very specific.
My. But. So we got.
This is.
So. I think what I thought. I also think you have these. We put them in this study. Yeah. Well, we're at my life. But maybe it's still chance. Yeah. And I didn't have. So. And I don't know. Well, why? Why do you go? So. And it's. Both. Uh, which is such. Thank you. For that's not. The.
So. My. Then I.
Yeah. It's like. They're secret. That. For sure. They thought very much. I can. Hi. Actually, I'm. Thank you. Sorry, thanks. I'm. 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 When I was getting married. I don't know. She was.
You know. Have you ever?
No. She's good. She's like, you know, my whole. I'm not. I'm. So she has. There. She has a wedding. Backside. So. Honestly, well. I thought that's successful. She kind of. How about? I think he's. Same. And that's everything. You know, the people. So. Oh, good. But. So. The. Yeah. She kind of. So. He's. So. He. So. So. Why? He was. But she was. That was. Four. Yeah. But she. But I'm. But I'm. So. Okay. On this. On. We. And. And. I think. Yeah. So. You know. One. Yeah. Yeah. We want. Right. But I. I don't really. I don't. It's. So. I've changed. But I didn't. Yes. Oh. They got. Show me. But I. Or. No. So. So. I'm. So. Actually. It was. And. Child. I. But. Okay. Yeah. So. She. Well. I know. Actually. Oh. I mean. Yeah. My. God. I know. I don't. Imagine if I can like. Up. That. This. I'm. Really. Free. It's. Not. He's. No. So. Uh. Or. I. There's. Yeah. Please. I'm. 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 Seeing. And just. Yeah.
So. You're. 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 That's gotta go. One. Which is. Um. What? Yeah. But. That's. Always.
Might. Be. A plan. How much. He's. He's. He's.
Yeah. Now. It's like. I'll pay him back tomorrow. Even. Like. So. We were. Anyway. That's. Uh. You can help out. He's. But. He. So.
All of. Um. That.
I'm. Going. To. She. But. That. 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 That's. One. Just. Tell. That. 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 Yeah. I'd say. You. Probably. This. What? It's. Something. About. This. Well. I see. But. I think. Also.
What? Exactly. The. Right. I think. It's. A. Same. But.
I don't. But.
Make more. Talking. How. But I didn't. Like. Like. It. Must. Yeah. No. People. Are. created. Or. Were. Happened.
Yeah. I thought. I'm. Uh. Oh. Pretty. And. The. She. Rocks. And. I'm. 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 Trying. Your. So. That. I. 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 Yeah. That's.
Yeah. I don't know. The. The. She. Has. Not. I understand. That. 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 That.
Okay. So.
So. See. Yes. I'm. 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 So. It's. So.
Brilliant.
Before. Where. I mean. If you. You. Want. To. Know. The. You. 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 To. Be. Listen. To. Completely. He's. What? What? It's. Me. He's. 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 You're. In. My. Own. World. I'm. You. Know. Just gotta get. Joe. You. Know. Something. Like. You. Know. I'm. Just. 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 I'm. Something. 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 It's. That's. See. But. It's. Probably. Don't. Do. That. I don't. 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 Sure. Was. I saw. It. That's. Better. And. You. See. It. Says. It's. 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 It's.[381.32]
Yeah. Uh, maybe there was. That'd be a subset. But one thing is. Right, that's wrong meeting. Do what you think you're here for. Yeah. Not as long as I'm also in the prime. They were back. The crazy. We're not. More than. You can help out. So. There's your.
Uh.
It's a kind of. Jesus. Well, we've got something. I don't know. I think that we're. You could question. I'm. Uh, we can start. Uh. Glad to know that I got you very well. So. Uh. Okay. I'm trying to. I have a relationship.
Everybody looking, I'm showing off.
I'm told you. This is very. Now.
And what people. Just off.
I'm. I'm. Well.
Yeah. Yeah. Probably more. Box. We love. Well, that's why. I'm not. I give it.
Are you? You've been. Yes. I'm. But. You're saying. A lot of. Change. It's. That's. I'm. I'm. So. So. Oh. I think. I don't know. So. Are you? Too much. On. You're. I'm. 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 I need. I'm. I'm. Again. It's. Down. I. I'm. I'll be. So. I'm. I think. Seriously. You. You. Yeah. I got it. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. Well. I. 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 Very. So. I don't want to. Here. I'm. Tell me. There's a lot of. Of. Travel. I'm. Uh. But. Send it. I'll. It's. I'm. Yeah. 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 I'm. I'm. Yeah. All. The. All. Most. Part. Okay. I'm. I'm. The. 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 So. So. You know. What you're saying. Yeah. You said. Yeah. Yeah. They're like. They're like. Yeah. Yeah. So. I'm. I'm. Much. Thank. Thank. For. That. Come. You're. 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 They're. 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 Wow. They're. They're. Yeah. You're. I'm. I'm. That's. I'm. 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 They leave. Like. Scary. Wow. It's. You're. 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 It's. You're. I'm. 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 I. You're. I'm. Yeah. But. I. I'm. 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 You know. But. It's. Just. You're. You're. See. I think. The. What. It's. You're. I'm. Just. Sorry. About. The. That's. They're. I'm. Also. She. 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 Yeah. But. You're. I'm. There. It's. Now. We. 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 I think. I just. See. For. We're. We're. I mean. Like. You're. 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 Okay. Oh. In. My. Class. People. So. I'm. I'm. Going. To. Show. Our. Show. We. Right. Right. Exactly. Oh. Well. I'm. Hold on. You're. You're. How many? I'm. 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 Yeah. But. I want. You. I made it. That's. You. It's. Going. To. Be. I. You're. I'm. All. It's. True. I. 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 It's. She. I. Well. I'm. Say. You gotta. Say. How. I'm. Listen. First. Of. Oh. You. You. It. Helps. That. It's. Something. You're. We. That's. The. But. It's. Pretty. 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 Yeah. It's. It's. So. We. We. So. I'm. I'm. Then. I'm. She. Gets. We. 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 So. Everyone. Try. Every. Nation. Wants. To. Have. A. Really. We. Walk. Forever. But. What? We. Get. On. We. We. Get. Grab. Anything. We. All. Just. Do. This. We. Like. Small. We. It's. For. Operating. Our. Like. I. Uh. Watch. How that. They. Have. My. Sports. What? You. Do. This. The. All. The. System. Is. The. One. What? I'm. Being. Single. Table. But. It's. When. I. Do. Yes. It. Doesn't. Have. Right. And. It's. Uh. I'm. Just. I'm. Remember. What? Share. I think. We. Are. Trying. To. Do. That. We. Want. To. Get. So. See. Before. We. Have. Project. Now. I'm. 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 This. I'm. But. I'm. So. I'm. Coming. Here. Some. You know. I can. I'm. Really. You. Can. I'm. That's. Even. That. I. From. The. Sh. I'm. I'm. Don't. That's. Yeah. Oh. It's. It's. Yeah. Yeah. So. All. The. Point. Go. Back. That. You. Pull. Down. Really. Pull. Okay. Yeah. I'm. 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 Something. Only. That he's. He. Didn't. Pull. Down. So. So. That. That. It. Was. The. But. She. Should. For. Because. I'm. 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 Yes. That's. That's. We're. Getting. To. Be. All. The. Fun. She's. The. Time. To. Do. This. Time. They have. Fun. Yeah. They should. Like. That. So. Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah. So. Yeah. I don't. Even. They're. Growing. Yeah. 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 Or. Uh. I'm. 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 Right. These. Situation. And. What? They. They. Pull. Attention. You. Can. Have. They. They. How. They. Are. They. So. It's. Actually. It's. 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 It's.[599.52]
Earlier today, uh and we're ready to go. Five of the six cameras will be operational. We'll start that around nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Um, and our staff will be moving around through the village to make sure that all of the precautions are in place. The police department has um adjusted staffing and the fire department will be on standby overnight. As things progress um into that, you know, area where we're we're down towards. So as far as my report, my report's a little lengthy um for a couple of reasons. But I wanted to demonstrate some of the um. The communication we have with the uh Army Corps that both myself and the mayor uh stay on top of. But we really don't get much in the way of satisfaction. Uh but I'll start from the beginning. So so I am leaving the village on April fifth. Uh I had that report last week. My last meeting will be March twenty fifth, my last board meeting will be March twenty fifth. Um, I'm asking the board this evening in my report to consider amending the resolution that was passed in late twenty twenty two. Uh where the village manager, the chair of the flood committee and the uh FMAC liaison are designated to talk to the uh. The Army Corps. I think mayor, that should include Gino, our village engineer and yourself at a memo. Um, so we really didn't consider that at that point. Uh but I think that should be something that the board uh may wanna consider. So um the village has dredged ourselves fourteen hundred cubic yards of uh of spoils. Basically large aggregate material and JT Cleary, our contractor. Based on the permit that that we received from the uh from the Army Corps in the state. Uh approximately seven hundred cubic yards. That was the permit limit. So we've re- we've been able to remove twenty one hundred, two thousand one hundred cubic yards of debris uh total. Um, some of those have been tested and disposed of. Uh JT Cleary is doing that through an approved vendor and approved site and some of them still sits on site, which we'll eventually get to. Um, and we're waiting for JT Cleary to come back and deal with a. Uh rip wrapping or or securing a wall um bent over up by Walker Park right now. Um, as some of you know. JT Cleary is the contractor for the county working on the Harbor Island uh park here. And so they've had a straight deadline based on the county uh concept, the county project. So our work was somewhat deferred, but I think that um they'll be able to get back to it by the end of this month. Regarding the river, the Marmaric River Dam. Um, I wanna urge the board to consider purchasing that dam from the Westchester Joint Water Works. I don't know if we're gonna have any movement in any either replacement or improvement on the dam unless we own it outright. Um, several members of the flood committee have been asking certain questions that I think um. Could be resolved by actually owning the dam. Um, if the res- is if the dam um can be improved in such a way to increase capacity. So personally myself, I've been there up to ninety minutes at a time. Um, at the dam observing the actual conditions and uh. Last time I did that, it did not spill over. But if it was just a little bit higher, I think we would be able to add inches of s- rains rainstorms. In our um in our capacity uh so that we don't have to worry about it. So right now, we're good at the four, three to four inch rainstorm. We're not good at the five to six inch rainstorm. Uh I think um increased capacity at the dam will significantly improve that. I also think that we should go after um. A permit with the county of Westchester to look at dredging the reservoir. Into what people tell me was the um original reservoir. I think that kind of capacity could also help us significantly uh with flood mitigation. To go back to our permit, uh we asked for a ten year permit, which was reduced uh to five years. Not really sure why, but we have a five year permit. Maintenance dredging. JT Cleary, our contractor was able to dredge up to the limits. JT Cleary is the real deal. They will not go past uh the limit. Unless we ask for additional, which we have, we just asked for additional areas for um for our consultants to um. To amend the permit that we have to do additional dredging. Making uh certain sections of the Sheldon Drake a little bit wider and a little bit more as far as capacity. Um, but as far as us, we will continue to do um what we're approved for as far as maintenance. And after each storm, our staff will need to go back and take a look at those areas to make sure that. We're actually now maintaining them and not just going back every ten years and taking a look at it. We're doing it um on a regular basis. Some of you know, at least the board members know, that I've had conversations with county staff requesting one million fifty thousand dollars. For the cost of two separate projects. The Wood Avenue Bridge, which will um cost seven hundred and fifty thousand to demolish. And the Center Avenue Bridge, uh which will probably cost three hundred thousand dollars because of. Some infrastructure that happens to be adjacent to the bridge. Um Legislative Parker has been really pushing this from the county end and I really appreciate that from her. But as you see in the emails, and I'll just summarize some of the emails. I ask the Army Corps what's going on in early December, December fourth as a matter of fact. And the response is uh typically, you know, thank you for your email. We're working on it. Um, we do need to have an agreement before we move forward. Um then the mayor, twenty days later, sends the same email and we get the same response. And so it's not like we're push- we're not pushing, we are pushing, we're just getting the same response from the Army Corps. We really do need them. To get the non-federal sponsor, the DEC and the federal sponsor to create an MOU. So that we can do advanced work and get credit for it. Uh once we have that document, I have no doubt that the county will come up with the money to be able to start those projects. And as I've told the board myself, um our engineering. Our engineer and our staff has the capacity to be able to manage those projects, likely do many other projects. So that's pretty much my report, Mayor. Um, if you have any questions, you can ask, but I just wanted to summarize those.
Thank you, Jerry.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
May I ask?
Yeah, sure. Actually, I have one question. Actually, I'm liable to. Um, two quick questions. Uh if I recall from the last email that I got from Army Corps. They had sent that paperwork to DEC or they had requested that. So that's where we're stuck. Right now is at DEC, okay. And the second one, um, did you have an update on the Waverly Avenue Bridge?
Yes.
I actually left the message for the town and I'm waiting for them to respond.
I did not.
I I spoke to the, I spoke to the supervisor.
Today?
Yesterday and today. It was her impression that work was supposed to be underway yesterday. She was surprised it wasn't and then she said, well, they should be out there today.
Sunday.
Yeah.
Probably today.
Oh, well, you um. I mean, uh I'm sorry, earlier the weekend, not yesterday. And um and and I called her from the bridge. There was nobody there. Uh so um. Uh, I don't know what what the issue is. I mean, it uh the 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 thing is. If that brid- if that bridge were out and 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 Center Avenue were out. That would be too too fewer impediments along that stretch of the Sheldon Drake. And and it would be a a little bit less to worry about in that Plaza area Plaza area tomorrow.
Came up at our two o'clock. So Dan, did you get a chance to reach out?
Yeah, well, I reached out to the town to make sure that the contractor, E O Q, made the site secure. Uh in advance of the storm. I said that anything that can be taken away, take away, anything that needs to be secured.
You like the barrels?
Like the barrels. Any, I I didn't get specific, but I said. You know, and and make sure that it's secure. Because, you know, we don't want stuff floating away. Um, you know, we had, you know, when we were doing Hillside, we had one bad storm where we lost some uh. We had a big piece fall off, but uh, you know, that's what I I asked them to make sure it was secure in advance of the storm.
To give you a indication why there hasn't been any work at home.
So uh. At our last status meeting, uh and we meet uh every other week. Uh, my impression was that the, you know, their contractor was supposed to be out there. Uh back from their holiday break uh beginning today. Uh obviously, that did not happen. Uh I I was out there myself. Around eleven AM with the village engineer and the site was nothing going on.
But I I I don't wanna say I brought it up that we could have waited to close, close the bridge until they were ready to start work. But they needed to get rolling and now it's been closed all this time. We're paying, somebody's paying for the over- police overtime and there's no work happening. So I think it's a an issue. But I wanna say I told you something.
All right, we'll get him. We will get an answer and we will share it with the village when we have it. Um, that's everything, Jerry?
That's it. Thank you.
Anybody have something, questions?
My question.
Okay, um, okay, we are gonna move to open comments, basically. Couple of quick changes before anyone gets up. We are going to give five minutes. We're gonna go back to that for now.
Yeah.
The one person who's happy, you're welcome. Um, we are, please be respectful. I do not wanna end up in any confrontations. I don't want anyone walking away angry. Five minutes is lots of time to talk. Um, if you have to come back up later, come back up later, but please be respectful. You see the everybody in the room. It's a packed room, standing room only. So if a lot of people wanna talk, give each person the opportunity to talk. Um. Is there anything else I want to add? Uh, I guess that's it for now. Uh so if anybody would like to speak. Please, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Please, so that everybody knows what's going on, state your name and please let us know where you live. You don't have to give the street address, but it would be nice to know where people are coming from. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is. One forty four. I asked the village, I asked all of you. That I'm concerned about the fifty five to fifty eight million dollar lawsuit. I think they have the problem. And I'm, I was told that uh the, when I asked. Where are your expenses passed on to? And I was told that uh you you didn't not know. However, we need an answer to that because we should know. Because it would be like taxation without representation the way I read it. Because a fifty five to fifty eight million dollar lawsuit. I want to know if those expenses, including whatever may be deducted by the insurance company, if they get passed on to us. That is not, you that the response I was told was is the mitigation. But that's not a a response that you can dodge. That that has to be answered. Because the lawsuit of that side that gets passed to us as taxes. Uh could create, I see a metaphor of having a gated community more than we already have. Because a lot of us would, a lot of people would want to move out rather than be part. Of a potential lawsuit that a lot of people here will not be able to afford. And the secrecy is not a legitimate one. How it turns out, I know you you don't know. However, you do know what would happen. I had a lawsuit nine months ago. And I I'm asking you, you should know at this point because it's supposed to be over. Would that pass on the conclusion to that lawsuit? Would that pass on to us also? And I'm worried. This is all about ethics also. Because among the people that creates the the tax burden, I know it's it's. A person by the name of Cindy Goldstein, who was, who who had an ethics violation. And was passed on and those expenses were passed on to her, then yet she was reappointed. To the planning committee, which is part of a network within the village. Of who decides who can afford to live here or not. Like, I talked to a lot of more people in residence and they'd like to know these answers. Because they can't of, we can't afford, and I say we here, to live under these conditions and secrecy. And we deserve to know those answers. Plans have to be made by people and it isn't already a gated community and very private. And you don't need a fence to say it is gated or not. An invisible tax structure creates that for many of us who are on fixed income cuts. The answers that have nothing to do with ways to to cater that.
Um, Bob, can you answer the insurance question? Is if we were to lose any of the lawsuit, is any of that covered by insurance? So it would come out of taxes if we were to lose.
That number, understand, that number is just a number.
Oh, I don't know if they can hear you all, sorry.
The answer is that lawsuit arises from the planning board's denial of the approvals for the Hampshire Country Club proposal. Because it's an intentional act, it's not insured. Uh.
Wow.
So, but you have to understand, that's a number placed on a lawsuit by a plaintiff. It it in all likelihood bears no relationship to the actual value of the lawsuit. At the same time, as the Hampshire folks are saying they lost fifty eight million dollars. As a result of the planning board's decision, they're saying that either taxes were un-receding, that the entire property was five million dollars. So that that's the.
Thank you, Bob.
So the gentleman gave a legal reason as to what could happen. We're still, doesn't answer my question, but we're still paying for the legal fees of protecting or winning it or losing it. I'm not asking instead of winning it or losing it. Somebody paid for that and the same question, who paid for the lawsuit that I put on the board? A fraction of a practical fraction was being dealt here because of features of ethics and accountability. And 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 the accountability of of people that make decisions on the board. That affect us like if they own, like if this is a private club that we have to pay admission for.
Thank you.
Legal expenses are paid by the village, that's.
Wait, wait, they're like, when people say they're paid by insurance policy, that's not true. I mean, I'm I have an economics degree, right with degrees and beyond. When you say paid by insurance?
I didn't say paid by insurance, I said by the village.
By the village and even an insurance policy could pay it. The the fact remains that an insurance policy and its costs get passed on to us anyway. There's really no such thing as insurance because the bank can get nothing out of it. Everybody here paid for it anyway. You know, so th- these are, the the these are facts that this disclosure had to be made.
Thank you. I have support. Yeah. Then speak a little louder. It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim O'Connor.
Good evening.
Washington Street. Washingtonville section of Marmaric. And I'm gonna remove myself as the parks and recommission member and speak on behalf of myself, Tim O'Connor. Uh, I'm watching the um the work session today. The only comment was a few comments I wanna make. The Fairview area, the Fairview area, uh Fairview area, I guess, issue with the drainage piping. Two million dollars, I think it was. It's just a call, I guess, of work to get done.
For sidewalks to be put in and also drainage.
Right, well, uh as a reminder, uh last year, two years ago, we had sewage. Uh replacement piping done in Washingtonville, you know, Senator, Washington Street, um Grand Street and Madison. And that was two years ago, great, came in whole summer, uh. We're supposed to follow up with the storm, storm drains, uh. This uh network there that they were supposed to put in as well. We don't have that yet. We got a storm pulled up tomorrow. Uh, street is open, sewers are done, everything was closed back up, our springs are all shot. They don't drain right, all punky, better, like I said, uh rain event tomorrow. And we have cooling all over Washington Street, let alone all the other. And it's exposed to this project. So as a reminder. You need stormwater runoff system in Washingtonville. There's one, there's only six catch basins of all Washingtonville, six. Okay, and so by putting in stormwater catch basins, this it it helps out with communication with the floodwaters, right? Second of all, I just wanna mention, there was a foot over the internet today uh on Facebook from Lou Young. I just wanna read what's out there. It's just a uh conversation that was out there today, observation on my part. Uh, every major weather event in Marmaric goes active, it's emergency operations, that great. I'm like that, awesome. That's what you're supposed to do. With our new river camera system for evacuating warnings and first response dispatch, great. Awesome, that's what you're supposed to do. We're preparing to do this work this week. The issue is the new river camera system for evacuation. So I'm talking a little bit about. Uh, the new river camera system. Well, the only, the manufacturer by L V T, and all it is, it's a security company. They're not managing water or collecting data. It's a security camera, you won't see it in um Portchester, the Home Depot, same thing. I went on the website several times today, yesterday, and L V T supports industries. You know the industries that L V T supports, the security company. Retail, construction, transportation, education, property management, law enforcement, entertainment, government, housing. Nothing on remote environmental monitoring for lakes, rivers and ponds. So this is set up for failure as far as the the rollout implementation of the so-called new river camera systems. I'd mentioned months ago in the rising floodwaters, the L V T security cameras. Will be rendered useless when I feel you hit the Florida Plaza Avenue. Who saw that, right? Had the L V T security camera there, waters came up, took it right out. Well, why is that? Because the floodwaters and electronics don't mix. So shorty, as I call it, it's a lightning rod at that point and expensive people. The L V T security cameras are not au- automated and need to be implemented manually by D P W on trails and monitor. At the E O C by an operator. So to transport these L V Ts, D P W's gotta come down, hitch them up in their trucks and move them all over the place. Twenty first century, we're planning to put people on Mars and we're still doing stuff from nineteen fifty with a truck moving stuff around. I don't understand that. That's not technology, twenty first century. Let alone manual intervention, that's a huge problem. So somebody somewhere at the E O C is gonna look at this monitor. And things change, people calling sick and so this person who's just watching this. With eyes on the screen is gonna watch all these cameras. Well, guess what? Sometimes the cameras go down, they're not reliable, we're vulnerable to these cameras. They don't, they don't bridge the gap here, let alone the operator. He might call in sick, he might get sick himself or get dispatched because they need. May have some, some well, so it moves that person that's monitoring the system out. So it's vulnerable. It doesn't work and it doesn't scale. The L V T security cameras are not floodproof, doesn't collect river data and then every levels of monitoring are all manual. They're all, there's no uh pre- signaling of uh warning levels of high river changes in any of the rivers. And it's just a security camera being disguised as a river camera system. That's it. There's no bones behind it. Uh, we need subject matter experts in the field of floodwaters. We can still the river users and all of our rivers and hire a flood plain manager. To help drive the sequence of security of our community ASAP. We need to put the cameras above grade where the river is, right? And so this is where we need it. Now, I'm just gonna throw it out there. Uh, USGS is actually uh.
Tim, could you come back up a second time if you wanna finish that? Please, I'm sorry. Just don't wanna start off this going over. Thank you.
Hi there, Mayor, uh members of the board. Um, my name is Jonathan Bregman and if you remember from the December eleventh uh working group session. Greg Culler had made a pretty compelling case to make some zoning changes and C one said two. To bring some new types of businesses into town. One of those types of business being uh dog daycare. It's a business that opened in the town, uh a lease ready to sign, the long form, is that changed to the zoning. I know Greg presented to the village um in the mature uh January fourth. A memo with some legislative history and some draft legislation. So what I'm looking for at least by the next working group um is for the. Board to direct the village attorney to draft that legislation so it can be approved and put into public hearing. Um, I wanna try to move that along, wanna bring in business in the town, you know, local contractors lined up. And again, the long form is just giving those zoning changes made, which have already been um advocated through the line. Like Greg and his his people. That's the thing, take consideration.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Body, you deliver Watchwood Street. Uh, I understand about the cameras also. Um, I was listening to the meeting earlier. And Jerry had said that uh basically the cameras were set up for the village. So that they can do their job. I understand that, but when we purchased the cameras, from what we understood, they were for the residents. We knew what was coming ahead of time. Um, and then Lou, you said it several times, how valuable these cameras were. Tell that to people that live on Madison, Waverly, Center. They're flooding, they still flood. The last time we had the water, I had to call the police to tell them that Plaza was being flooded again. They can't even put the barricades. So I don't know how valuable they were. You know, I'm not, listen, we've been coming up here for so long and stating the same stuff over and over again. And it's not like we're trying to point fingers. We need help. We're not getting help in Marmaric. And I know Jerry's leaving in April. But I hope whoever you guys hire is somebody that really cares about Marmaric. It's, this is enough, man. Now it's raining again tomorrow. We gotta move everything again. Everybody's heart is in your throat. Can't live like this. We pay high taxes. I give back as much as I can, a lot of people do. We can't stay like this anymore. We really can't, you know, and and um we hear the same stuff over and go, oh, we're doing this, we're doing that. The dredging, the dredging was so good. Listen, if it rained another hour, we were, we were screwed. Does it help a little bit? I don't know. It's not, but it's not enough. It's not enough. And I, I just want my voice to be heard, even though it's sore. Been coughing for a week straight. The bottom line is. The cameras are are not helping us. And the dredging may do a little something. We need a lot more. We really do. And uh, I mean, that's what I've been asking for. When I get up here, I'm not trying to disrespect anybody. I'm trying to ask for help. We need someone that's gonna go fight. Like you guys were up here discussing what was going on. You didn't, Jerry didn't even know. You're discussing it at a meeting. You're just supposed to be known already. What's going on? We shouldn't have to 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 sit here and listen to that. Especially that we know a storm is coming tomorrow and we may be screwed, excuse my language. This is, this is, this is, I can't do it anymore. This is ridiculous. You know, we we pay, we pay our taxes. We need help. We don't need BS anymore. We don't need people telling us what's good, what's not good. It's not good because every time it rains and Plaza goes over. It's likely that Center Street, Waverly, Madison are gonna get flooded. And God forbid, if it's a real bad storm, everybody's gonna get hit again. And as far as the Army Corps of Engineers not giving us answers, then it's time to go get those answers. I don't know whose job it is, but hey, let's get off our ass and go get some answers. We can't, where are we gonna keep waiting until we flood, 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 until nobody's left? Instead, we're talking about building. I'm sorry, man, I'm just tired. That's it.
Thank you, James.
My name is Reverend James Taylor, pastor of First Baptist Church located on eight seventeen Howard Avenue. And first I wanna give kudos to the gentleman that just spoke. It's time for us to solve a problem. We've been going through this. We're on Howard Avenue. Every time it rains more than three or four inches. My members and myself, I, my heart is in my throat because I don't know what's going to happen. But when I do come to the church and find out that my basement is flooded again and again and again. And every time I ask the question, Army Corps of Engineers didn't give us an answer yet. Well, why don't you get them off their behind to go do something? Call our congressmen, call our senators, call somebody, evidently the Army Corps of Engineers is not doing their job. And if they're not doing their job, when we come to you guys, y'all don't tell us anything, so that says to what? You ain't doing your job. I wanna say kudos to Dan over there, because Dan, when I called, he tried to tell me things to calm me down. When I tell Dan, the things I say to him, it's not personal. But he's the one that you guys have said, you talk to them and keep them off of us. So somebody needs to get something done. My church is getting ready to celebrate our one hundred years of being in the Village of Maranach. And over the last eight years, we have been flooded at least four times. Water has come up as far as twenty-five feet, destroyed the sanctuary of my church. My church had, we had to tear it down to, to this real unit grid, to this structure itself, to rebuild. And then, a few years later, the same freaking thing happens again. And I'm tired of it happening. Not only the church, but everybody on Howard Avenue, it gets flooded, our own Lester gets flooded out. And you can't tell me that there's not an answer. You can't tell me that there's not something that we can do. Because if there's nothing we can do, we might as well close up shop and everybody go home. Hi. I have some members here tonight, I'm glad to hear, cause it, it's sort of causing me to stay on the straight and narrow. Because I've had enough. If it's your job, maybe. But when I go to that church and I gotta put boots on, and I gotta put boots on if I'm going fishing, to go down and dip water out, we put in extra sun pump to try to deal with the problem. But you can't deal with the problem when the water's coming in faster than the pumps can pump it out. The creek behind the church, we was told that it was supposed to be drugged. I haven't seen one machine, I ain't seen one person, I ain't seen nobody over there doing anything in that creek behind the church. So whatever you, whatever is being done, is being done in the dark, and, and, and nobody else is seeing what's being done, because we are still benefiting. And until, and as long as I'm benefiting, as long as my church has been affected, that means somebody is responsible. So we need, Madam Mayor, trustees, the village manager's leaving, so I ain't gonna get on him too much.
Thank you.
But somebody gotta do something.
Jerry, are you familiar with the stretch of, uh, of, uh, I believe it's Shell Drake?
Maranach River.
Maranach River, uh, you, 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 are you familiar with that stretch, uh, is it, uh?
When Dan, when, when Dan led the project with the bridge, he can give you some details about-
So by hillside?
Hillside, yeah.
Oh, 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 okay.
Is the church right next to hillside?
Oh, got it, got it, okay, great, great. So that was, that, that was, um, that area was addressed somewhat with the concern of the bridge, right?
Yeah, I was just, oh, yeah, we did, we had, we had to, gotta, uh, the bridge is in good shape now.
Yeah.
Uh, we did work on the walls around the bridge. Uh, we did some, you know, cleanup of the riverbed around the bridge. Um, I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty, uh, there's a lot of stone along the, 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 uh, the base of the river at that location. So I don't know how much, you know, silt there actually is, but I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it wa- it wasn't as impacted by silt deposits as other bridges in the village, especially like, uh, the North Berry Avenue Bridge, the Grove Street Bridge, and, uh, uh, the bridges along the Shell Drake.
And, 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 and again, uh, this is, not that it's minimizes anything, but, uh, we're working to undo or catch up on decades of, uh, of neglect, where nothing was done through the result. Oh, well, I mean, okay.
Thank you. Is there, I'm sorry. I am Bonnie Castarata, living on four fifteen Prospect Avenue. I'm actually here on the, here at Parkin Lane. Um, I'm here because the residents that do live here-
Can we pull the mic, pull the mic down?
Residents that do live here, and the people that do move into this community, are moving into here and staying here because of its quaintness, they don't want a mini, mini city. I am asking that the board should be- My question is, how does, um, the board have authority to either sell or get rid of village's property without bringing it to the residents first? So my question would be, why couldn't we put on the November ballot and put into a referendum? So the residents can have a say.
Hi, Laura Body, Washington Street, I'm a member of the Traffic Committee. I'm speaking as a resident of Washington, though, for the Washington Villainhood Association. I come here as a religious job, but I'm sure people are sick and tired of hearing me, but I guess I'm not gonna stop. I don't really care who's sick of it or not, but I can tell you what I'm sick of, is being here on even the flood. And I'm in the same position I was in in oh seven, nineteen ninety-four, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen sixty-seven, and so on, and so on, and so on. I think this room is up to here, and maybe a majority of you are here for affordable housing, that's wonderful, I'm not against that. But it's not the type or place for it right now. Because you know what's broken in the Village of Maranach? It's flooding, it's traffic, and it's parking, but mostly it's flooding. We don't have a handrail on it, I came here in September, after we flooded again, and the Shell Drake came up over its banks, right into my backyard, and right into my basement. Improvement? The only thing that improved was the velocity of the water coming to my home midway from the Shell Drake. That Shell Drake River is a disgusting mess. It is filled with debris, it is filled with shipping containers, it is filled with wood, bricks, locks, roving, everything and anything you could think of that's dumping into that river on a daily basis. Blind eye turn, tone deaf, plenty of that going around, around here. Nothing is being done, low-hanging fruit that could have been cleared away, jobs are not being done. Nothing is being done. And I said it after we flooded that last time, giving this village the benefit of the doubt. It's not anybody's real fault here. It's bigger than the Village of Maranach. And not any one of you, any one of you walk on water and can fix this. But what you can do collectively is have urgency, dedication, and foresight to get it done quickly, something. Instead of blauvoiting and blowing smoke and saying how wonderful things are, because if it was wonderful, you would hear it from the residents, telling you, thank you for helping us. I'm not gonna begrudge this board or this village manager for doing certain things for us that did benefit us and helped, because those things are recognizable and we've been thanking this about. But there is no thanks in the flooding department. There is no control, you don't even have a plan, a tangible timeline. Nothing on record to say, we're gonna do this, stupid feat, I could care less. That means nothing, you're bringing the rivers, trying to get the rivers back to where they're supposed to be, with your years of neglect that we could blame so many for. But that's not getting us anywhere. Nothing is getting us anywhere. But I can tell you, I'll be pumping my grass with a pump, because it's gonna be running from Madison Street into my backyard, into my home. And then you know what's gonna happen after that? The code enforcer's gonna come around and give everybody citations for pumping into the street, into a street that there is no sewage or drainage, and have been overlooked for two years, plus seven, plus fifteen. We don't get any support, we don't get any support for putting, to, for mitigating our properties, no support in giving us dry wells, no support in, in doing any of that. But you're coming around with your ticket and you give them out, because we don't have anywhere to put our water, just hold it and collect it. Why not? It's Washington Mill, they're the flats, it doesn't matter, they're poor. Such an agenda that's written about the people that live in the flats. Last I checked, my taxes are almost eighteen thousand dollars for beachfront property that I didn't pay for. Now, it's sick to my stomach to me. Using my cars, my home, my everything, my everything. And I know everybody doesn't like to hear this, I am a fifty-six-year-old woman, I am a fourth-generation resident of the Village of Maranach, and I come here with a bold, old history of the beginning, middle, and end. What you need to do is flood the apartment tomorrow, flooding strictly. Stop with all of these new things you wanna build, and who cares about parking, and all of this stuff that you're making up? And fix the flooding first.
Hi, my name is Mark Waxford, I live on Prospect Avenue, chips down the street, um, like the lady before, my concern is the development that you're putting in across, and the parking, it's not so much that you wanna develop that area, it's how, and the research that's gone into what it's gonna be used for, I don't think it's a valuable use of Maranach's resources. We have really big problems, like flooding, that we've talked about before, and we're giving away probably one of the most valuable pieces of real estate in the village to build on, that's not gonna generate tax revenue. You could sell that tomorrow and get millions of dollars and hire some experts to mitigate the flood damage if you wanted to. Why are we giving everybody the reason to be generating funds of money for the village and using it to fix things that are going on in the flats, to fix things that are going on with all the flood problems? Instead, you're building a building that, as far as I can see, has no real value for current residents of Maranach. Have any of you guys talked to any of the schools around here and seen how, what capacity they're at? I have two kids going to Macs right now. It's full, it's absolutely full, a new complex here is gonna be zoned for Macs. You ask them if they can fit fifty more students in there, twenty more students in there. That school is awesome, what they do at that school for kids all around Maranach and Marchmont is awesome. You know they can't afford a new playground for special-need kids that they've been trying to do for a couple of years right now? Their budget's exhausted, they can't do it. Sell this piece of property if you wanna get rid of it and you wanna develop it, and give it to some of the schools so they can enhance it. Give it to HOMICS, who's dying, or more land, and would be increasing their school. I'm really concerned, not that you wanna develop it, I think that's a bad idea. The traffic at this intersection, if you put eighty units, will just totally destroy the avenue. I think it's gonna destroy shared services, I think it's gonna hurt the schools, I think it's gonna hurt EMS, I think it's gonna hurt the fire department. We don't have the resources for it, but most importantly, out of all of that, the process. I would love for people to tell us what the RFP process was, and, and crew from a financial background, a real estate background, a development background, said, hey, you have this massive piece of property, a couple acres right there, I have a way that you can use it that will benefit the village. Or did we just throw a blank RFP out there and get responses from seventy units to a hundred and eighty, and we don't even have the exact footprint of what the land use is gonna be? That seems totally irresponsible for me. The problems that people have talked about today with flooding that affect us four, five times a year now, we could be generating revenue if you wanna sell that piece of property and use it to hire real experts, not wait for the Army Corps of Engineers, which would probably take five years, and get a plan to work on some of that stuff. What you guys are doing there is not right. The village doesn't want it, people don't want it, the schools can't do it, you have to fix a lot of problems before you put more burden on what's going-
Good evening, my name is Nina Jones, I'm a member of First Baptist Church here in Maranach, eight seventeen Howard Avenue. My pastor spoke so eloquently, I don't feel exactly the way he's, the way he toned it down, I'm very upset. I'm very annoyed, I mean, every time it rains, every time it rains, I mean, they, the weatherman can say it's sprinkled, and the next thing you know, we're getting calls in the morning that the church has flooded. It is ridiculous, there has got to be an answer, can't keep tiptoeing around this, week after week, month after month, year after year. I've been here ten years, and I've put my boots on, I've dumped water, it's ridiculous, there has to be some type of solution. Does anybody have an answer that they can give me today, get to the First Baptist family, anybody? So we come, meeting after meeting, month after month, and nothing's gonna be done. So it's gonna rain again tomorrow into Wednesday, so take the day off so you can come help dip water out of the church again. Our refrigerator, our stove, our microwave, everything is flipped upside down in the kitchen. There's nothing that's salvageable, nothing. The bathrooms are ripped completely down to the bare bones, nothing, there's nothing. How much money do you think the insurance company is gonna keep you? We're paying, but they ain't gonna give us jack, they're not gonna give us anything. And if they do, it's the bare minimum, you can't even buy a microwave probably for what they wanna give us back. I mean, how many refrigerators do you think the church can afford to buy? How many stoves do you think we can af- afford to buy? I mean, you go downstairs right now, there's plastic up the bathrooms, I mean, the, he, he's fixed them so that the ladies can, the men can use the bathrooms, but I mean, it's gonna be another storm tomorrow. What's gonna happen, um, on Thursday? Friday into Saturday, Monday into Tuesday, Wednesday into Thursday, it's gonna keep happening, over and over and over. But there has to be an answer. I mean, and no disrespect to any of you, I know Ms. Yizer, she came, she came to help us, had the fire trucks come and dip water out. But I mean, none of you people, I've never seen any of you on eight seventeen Howard Avenue. We getting ready to celebrate our one hundredth anniversary, anybody interested in coming to be a part of that? I mean, it, this is serious business to me, this is, this is my church. And it's really starting to get on my nerves, yeah.
I'm Hogan, I'm right over there on Tompkins. Uh, just two things, the project across the street that's been proposed, I don't know much about it. All I've heard lets me think that it's kind of asinine, even take hard in the first ones. That's all I know about that one. For the flooding, number of years ago, I worked in Yonkers. And, uh, the Solmillo River goes through near Neppahan Avenue. At one point, I don't know when it happened, the Army Corps of Engineers built walls on each side of that river and formed a channel. So I'm thinking, why don't we do the same thing here? Because you know the water's gonna come over the banks, everything is low down by Maranach Avenue, Howard, the church, and all that, that whole area, Lester, uh, Washingtonville. Why can't cha- a channel be made like it was done in Yonkers? It, it stopped flooding when they did that, because it was hot.
Jerry, there, there is some, uh, channeling, uh, involved in the ACE project, is there not? A lot of it, you know?
Josh Lanza, hello, you guys. So I think it's ironic that a, uh, a man of God got up and talked here tonight, because as he talked, and he said he was head of the church, I looked down here, and metaphorically, it looks like you guys are sitting high up in your ark here with your water underneath, nice and safe. But you guys are responsible for our ark. Where's our ark? These people have been flooding out for a very long time and asking you for help. And I think the issue is, is that you don't know how to help, but you don't know how to say you don't know how to help. And instead of taking suggestions or listening to people, they get side-eyed, and we've had this problem for many years, so I guess it's not your problem. We heard, we can build this building and work on flooding at the same time, we've heard that, many times. But you've proven that you can't, because you haven't even mastered- But you've proven that you can't because you haven't even mastered one and you want to take on another. Which is why I'm saying tonight that this building, this proposed building needs to be put on hold. And I'm here also. We're here also to say this on camera because I think this is important. There is a conflict of interest here with Manny Rawlings in this building. And I think that Manny should seriously consider recusing himself on this. I think Manny, you should, you need to really do the right thing if you want a future in this village. And to be re-elected, you need to really listen to the people. The people here do not want this building. There's numerous reasons and one of them, which happens to be the main one, is we would like you to put all your focus in on flooding. There are people here who, insurance is not covering their homes. Imagine you had to come out of pocket every year, once a year, to redo your home. And on top of that, still pay your taxes, still maintain your bills, and still try to keep a good quality of life. So again, Manny, I, I urge you, this isn't personal and you need to really think about refusing yourself from this project.
I'm Rita O'Connor from Delightown, resident of Washington Street. I've been here a long time. I've experienced many floods. Um, I'd like to talk briefly about two things. Um, first of all, just in case you guys can't read between the lines. The residents of the Marinerex, most of the residents of the Marinerex, I'm not supposed to speak, we have everyone, do not want this project to cross. That's why I like to check you guys are here to help us, not to go against what we want. So please reconsider for so many reasons. At any given point, to get from point A to point B in the Marinerex, it's gridlock. We want a small, quaint village, not New York City. Please stop bringing New York City into our little village. You ever try getting a parking space in a village? When you drive around and around, everyone's double parked like New York City, right? Okay? So what are you going to do? You're going to destroy the par- only parking lot that we have? Like, common sense, guys. It was, it was built as a parking lot for a friggin' reason. Now you're taking it down? I just, I just parked there. The parking lot is full. I don't know whose cars they are, but it's full. Where are those cars going to go? If I were the residents in this area, if I were the business owners in this area, I would be here complaining. Because all those cars are going to spill into this neighborhood. All the cars that, well, the people that are living there are going to spill into our neighborhood. It's going to affect, like the other gentleman said, our schools, our EMS. Firemen, everyone. Our infrastructure, our infrastructure can't handle what we have now. And why are we building this? For whom? If you call me, it's for all the village residents and the teachers and EMS that work here, that would be great. But that's not the case. If we get one village resident that's allowed to go in that building, we'd be lucky. What's so good about this project? West Haven? Okay, you know West Haven's mission statement is? West Haven's mission is to provide safe, affordable housing to enable homeless and low-income individuals and families to become self-sufficient and to further the physical, social, and economic stability of distressed neighborhoods. Call us a distressed neighborhood, I paid friggin' twenty thousand dollars a year to live here. In America or in the United States. So now we are having a company who helps distressed neighborhoods come in and build what? For hope. For hope? I don't understand. What, what is the purpose of this project? It's not going to help any village residents. It's going to help whoever is building it and put money in their pocket. I'd like to also leave you with one other comment. So I was watching the uh, the previous meeting, the um.
Work session.
Work session. Thank you. You know, so we're, we're trying to approve two million dollars to help out our friends in Oriente. That's great for flooding. And, and I appreciate that. I mean, they're flooding, they deserve to be helped too. But as some other residents said, Washington Street floods on a daily normal rain event. Our village manager knows, we have no drainage. We're not allowed to put water in the street. We have to keep it on our property. I had six feet of water in my house during Ida. Where the hell am I putting that water? Where are our drains? Please, where are our drains? You can't fix this overnight. I understand that. Oh, please. Baby steps. We need to see results. Guess what? This is a fact. I called in sick tomorrow. My boss wanted to know why I wasn't coming into the office. I said, it's going to rain. We're on flood watch. I have to move my stuff. He said, oh my God, again? What is your government doing for you?
Good day. Gianni Martinez, Community Resource Center on Center Avenue, but also a thirty-year resident from Old White Plains Road. And I'm here to speak, I'm being helpful to the people, to the people, because that is who we elected. I'm not going to pretend that you're all sitting on an ark and the rest of us are drowning and you're not. I, I understand that I share an unpopular opinion in this room. But I also understand that every person is not the entire residents of the community.
We're the majority. We're the majority, right.
So this is what we're going to allow, right? It's just like uh, back and forth. When I'm speaking to the board, who we elected, who are members of our community, regardless of what happened, what your history is, who live in this community. I am here to share an unbiased opinion because it is unbiased. I've lived in this community too. I've lived on Howard, on Plaza, on Old White Plains Road. I operate a business on Center Avenue, so I completely prioritize the fact that we need to focus on flood mitigation. I understand that. And I am imploring you to do that. But I'm also going to say that in doing so, you will displace hundreds of families that no longer can live in the Washingtonville community. And they will not be able to do that. And those are the people who are enriching our school district and impor- and, and making it a provision that we do dual-language programs. You think that we would have dual-language programs if we didn't have a diverse community here? No, we do not. We have the community and the school district that we have because of the diverse community we reside, we, we live in. And if you as the Board of Trustees, who are members of our community, not people who are up high and wherever you are. No, you are me and I am you. So I am asking you to consider the fact that we can do both things. That the community needs both. We need flood mitigation. Don't, don't worry about people laughing. Like, that is ridiculous. Worry about the fact that you need to do two things simultaneously. That you need to focus on flood mitigation. I understand that we have not focused on that in a really long time. I get it. We are flood, I'm, I'm still not with the center.
I, 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 hey, hey.
Excuse me.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Like, I respected your opinion. Thank you. I am a resident too. I have flooded too. I've moved too. I have a business that is no longer operational in the Washingtonville area, but I'm also representing the community. And they need affordable housing because they need to stay here and they need flood mitigation. They need flood mitigation and they need affordable housing. Nothing is more important than the other. So as the Community Resource Center, as a member of the Marinerex Coalition for Affordable Housing, as a resident, as a human being, I am asking you to consider both. Not as the Board of Trustees because you are all-powerful, no sé qué. No. You are a member of my community and I am a member of yours. And what happens to you happens to me and what happens to my family and my community happens to you. So I'm not going to, you know, blow smoke up your whatever because it is not my business what happened to you in the past. Like, it's none of your business what happened to me in the past. We're all in this together. So I'm asking you to consider that. Consider that. That we can do two things at once and get it done. We can do two things at once. We need affordable housing. And for all of those who are saying like, oh my God, but that's going to bring a new community members. Half of you don't even live, you didn't even, you can't hear from other communities. And so what, we're not supposed to welcome you? So now we're not supposed to welcome you? No, we do welcome you. You actually run our village. And nobody said anything to you. So why can't we do that for other people? I don't understand.
Thank you, Gianni. Thank you.
Um, let me, let me just say this, and I'm speaking um, because Sharon doesn't, doesn't have a voice right now. If any person gets up and speaks, give them the respect that any person, that it was if you were speaking. You cannot howl or give your own comments. Reserve that to yourself. And if you cannot contain yourself, then I please ask you to leave the room. Because we, Sharon did say that we are trying to keep it respectful. So to sit there and make comments while somebody else has their five minutes, which you already may have or may, you may want to have, please respect each other, point blank. And if we cannot do that, we can gladly, you can gladly escort yourself out. Because Mayor, Mayor Torres did state in the beginning, we are trying to keep it respectful. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to, I'm sorry, go. Please, try to be as respectful as we can because you want the same. I'm not going to ask you to leave. Just keep in mind that everyone should have the same opportunity to speak, okay? I understand the emotions are running high. I do. If you're agreeing and you can keep it calm, but we don't want to attack anybody who's speaking. We all have the same right. I hope you heard that.
Hi, my name is Catherine Hiller. I've lived on Lenny Road Avenue at Key Coach Hill thirty-five years. And I'm also glad you reminded us to be courteous because I do think that what I'm going to speak about, uh, I might be in the minority opinion in this room, okay? First of all, I want to thank everybody that's spoken so eloquently about the flooding. Flooding is the major problem in our village. It's come before everything else. It's gone on for so long, as everybody keeps saying, and obviously expertise is failing us. So we do need to solve that problem. But I didn't come to speak about that. I came to defend and validate affordable housing across the street here. One of the great problems in America is good equality, which leads to bitterness. And people on the lowest rungs, the lower rungs of society have not had a fair shake of rice. Things have gotten harder for them. So here is a chance, as a village, to do something about it. I, I understand that it won't always be easy, but when I hear of all eighty units and fifty children, I think, wait a minute, what is that? One or two more children per class? That seems doable. We can do that. We can welcome people, teachers and nurses, who we want in our community. And I think we should. I think we should try our very best to make this thing happen. To make affordable housing in our village happen and to continue our reputation as being the friendly village. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, Lonnie, thank you for what you said. I'm glad. You said exactly what you said. I have come to this podium in the past and one of my biggest issues was if somebody says something here that you don't agree with, you say thank you. You don't make any comment, you don't disparage them. Everybody here has the listening, everyone has an opportunity to give their point of view and resp- and say whatever they want. They deserve your respect. They deserve to be listened to. They don't deserve to be criticized because of what they said. That woman has been an amazing resource for this village. And for the comments, I understand people are, have high feelings and concerned about this. But I was very disappointed and I, I hope not to see that again. If somebody comes up here and you don't agree with what they, what they have to say, you don't agree. You don't disparage them and you respect them. Thank you. Uh, Bernie Camarda, FMAC speaker for myself. I've lived here for fifty-six years. Okay? I wasn't going to get up here tonight because this is not the time for across the street, but everybody's talking across the street. So I had to get up. There's a disconnect going on here, okay? FMAC wants a meeting, okay? We're going to get a meeting to be. What we're going to say, what we're going to do. We're an advisory committee. We all have great ideas, all seven of us. We want to add two more. For what reason, I don't know. We all have good ideas. The ideas are falling on deaf ears, okay? And until we right the shri- right the ship, there's no across the street's going to happen. Okay? So the priorities are flooding. Jimmy Bobby doesn't want to come up here and say the same thing over and over. I don't want to say the same thing over and over. I'm going to say it over and over again. Number one problem of the village. Stop adding problems that you do not know what you're getting into, okay? This was the ex-mayor's brainchild, okay? He came up with this idea. He was brought up in affordable housing. I get it, all this. Have any one of you gone to his residence where he grew up and seen what it looked like? Fifty years later? I don't think you know what's going to happen there fifty years later. And if you're not going to be here fifty years from now, then forget about this place, okay? We got a third of the Marinerex that floods. We got a parking problem. We have a village that Mr. Cutler brought up at the last work session that's failing. The Economic Development Pre- Plan, the village is failing. Why it's failing is because nobody can park there is one of the big reasons, okay? You have a failing library. You have a, a marina that's, who knows what's going on with the marina? If it's, if it's in the plus or in the minus. I don't know, I'm not going to comment on it. But I know the village is failing. Okay? We have problems upon problems and you want to put more on top of it. There's a disconnect, okay? We have the ACE program, the ACE project. That's not the only thing that's going to stop the flooding. There's other things. The FMAC could load this agenda with everything flooding from now until five years from now, until we all accomplish these things, okay? So ADUs, this one, that one, it's all got to just be put on the back burner. Because we can't live like this anymore. It's going to rain tomorrow night, two to four inches. Enough is enough. We're not the only ones that contribute to our own flooding either. It comes from Up County. We have to deal with them. The Army Corps, like the man, like the gentleman said. Schumer, Pocle, they don't want to deal with us, the ACE. We gotta go. We gotta go one step up the ladder. And we have to talk to Steve Otis, Shelley Mayer, Gillibrand, and Schumer tomorrow, okay? And get them to do the talking for us because the D E C is involved, the state, everyone's involved. And this can't be done. It's not gonna happen. Two things are not gonna happen here. You're not gonna get flooding fixed and have affordable housing. I'm sorry, it's not gonna get done. The FMAC has idea after idea after idea. And how to do what, and how to do this. And it's, and it's, it's all messed up. You quoted saying, we're a third grade soccer team. Well, you know what? The coach is doing that to us. He's putting the players out on the team. And that's what happens when the coach doesn't know how to coach.
Good evening, uh, I'm Rich Ferguson, I live on Urban Streets uh in the Village. And since my property borders from Mamaroneck River, I can speak eloquently about flooding. Um, but it's not what I'm here for tonight. I'm here for what I don't see happening about affordable housing. I don't see a long range plan. Give you some history. I came to the village in nineteen eighty-one with a degree in education, with the hope to work at Mamaroneck High School. Or the Homicide, or one of the elementary schools, okay? Did not succeed in that, and that's fine, I moved on. Okay? But when I first walked halls in Mamaroneck High School, the average class was twenty-two students. The average class now is thirty-three students, okay? When my wife graduated from Mamaroneck High School in nineteen seventy-seven, her graduating class was five hundred and twenty-six people. Okay? The last graduating class, I think, was about a hundred people less. Yet, the classrooms have gone up by fifty percent in terms of students. Okay, fine. Two more students, three more students, doesn't seem like a lot, okay? But the primary reason people moved to Mamaroneck, I guess you could say there's two, but in my opinion, I think there's only one. It's the same reason everybody moves to a community in Westchester County. They want really good schools for their kids, okay? The harbor's nice, but man, okay, I'm not buying a million dollar house so I can walk in Harbor Island Park. I'm buying a million dollar house so my kids get a good education. Okay? You add more people. To this village, you've now made that classroom thirty-five people. You've made the extracurricular activities like band, art, and physical education forty people in a class. What do you think those teachers are accomplishing? Be honest and tell me, cuz I gotta tell you the truth. They're struggling to accomplish anything. Okay? If people don't move into this village because their kids aren't gonna get a good education, I gotta tell you. There's gonna be lots of affordable housing, because the value of my house is gonna go down twenty-five percent, cuz I can't sell it. Okay? That's what it really boils down to. We've talked about, oh, Hampshire, let's build another school on Hampshire, okay? So now we build affordable housing, now we've gotta build another school, now we've got a lawsuit. Have you guys thought more than three months ahead? Have you thought two years from now, or five years from now? When is the time a new public school was built in Westchester County? Take a guess. One in the last thirty years. How long built one new elementary school two years ago? That's the last school that's been built in this county in thirty years. Where are you gonna put a school in Mamaroneck? Hampshire? In the flood zone? That'd be good. Really have to think long term. It's not three months from now, it's not six months from now. Okay? It's what's gonna happen five years from now, ten years from now. If anybody wants to ask a question about flooding, we have the answer for you, I got news for you, okay? I have neighbors across the street. Every single person who's bought the house across the street from me has flooded in the first six months they've owned the house. Okay? Young couple just moved out, they owned the house for two and a half years. First flood, their basement. Second flood, four feet up the stairs. Flood last week, in the basement. They sold. They said, we've had enough, okay? But that's not the point. The point is, you guys have to think long term. You cannot develop this village if you don't think beyond the next three months. That's all I have to say.
My name is Danielle Bierman, I live in Heights. Um. A lot of people are asking you guys questions about the building. You voted on it today. You told people you already had it in the bag. That you had the votes to get it done, that it was, you know, the tech project of yours. Seems like a lot of people here want only one thing. I wrote a speech to you guys for three weeks. I edited it, and I edited it, and I edited it. Because I was making it about how I felt about affordable housing. It took me my entire life to get here. My uncle Bobby moved here to Larchmont. And when I was a little kid, I came up here with him. And all I wanted to do was live in Larchmont. It got close. I live in Mamaroneck. In the village. My mother found this beautiful village. You are going to destroy this village. On so many levels. Other than Sharon, who's lived in public housing? Anybody? Anybody who lived in public housing? That's here now? Guess what? I did. You don't wanna live in public housing. What purpose? What, what are you showing the people that worked so hard to get here, that sacrificed? That worked hard, didn't go on vacations? Lou, I don't like your face, bro. I don't like it, it's disrespectful. You know how like it's disrespectful to like yell out? Pay attention to me.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I am listening, alright, and.
Alright, I real, I really.
Don't like my face.
I really, really do. This is really important. Everybody needs to make the flooding a real big priority. Has anybody ever thought of talking of white plains? You know, the water comes flying down Mamaroneck Avenue on a good, on a good rain? Like, like, go drive up Mamaroneck Avenue tomorrow when it's pouring. And see how that water just rushes down from white plains. How about we like, think outside the box and talk to other towns and. And find out how we can all work together to get this done, you know, like a village? Enough with this affordable housing. I know, did the lady leave? You know, I know she wants to, everybody wants better. I wanted better, Sharon, you wanted better, everybody wants better. Everybody wants better. Let's do better. But stop, like, always just that, that be the only topic. Oh, well, you could live here, so why can't I live here? Earn it. Earn it. You have to earn something. Do you know my kids? I've never bought a computer for my kids, or their phones. They save their birthday money. They save money from working. Why? Because they're gonna take care of it better when it's theirs. You give people things. Go, 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 go to uh low-income housing, go to affordable housing places where nobody takes care of anything. Do you see some of what it looks like in the village? We own our stuff, we take care of it. People are losing their whole lives. Make that a priority. Make the people who are, who are paying you, paying for everything here. Make them the priority. Stop everything else. Talk to other people. Think outside the box.
Um, hi, Amy Siskin, I just wanna make two short points. One is, yes, there, the flooding has been happening for decades, but we are not unique. This is happening throughout the country, that the extreme flooding is happening everywhere, New Jersey, uh California. The extreme weather, the extreme flooding in Vermont. Um, they have flooding in areas that have never flooded before. So I think part of the issue is, it's accelerated. The number of floods, the durations of the floods. So the problem, although it's existed, is now that much worse for people living here, and um. Which, I mean, we can feel it every month in our Facebook group, people are worried about the next flood. It's just no way to live. There are small steps we can take, there are great ideas at the FMAC. Maybe the entire board should attend an FMAC meeting. Since that seems to be the purpose of what most residents want. The second thing I wanna say, a year ago, I came to my first meeting here, well, eleven months ago. When the board was going to pass through a change of their term from two to four years. We had a big turnout, it ended up being a resolution. I think the easiest way to deal with this problem is to put it on the ballot. You have an election coming up, November. Put it on the ballot, let the residents decide. I think they've told you how they feel because the mayor, former mayor Murphy ran on this issue and lost. Really hard as an incumbent to lose. He lost. Residents for sending a message. I suggest you listen.
I just wanna finish up one other uh issue from the last year. Uh, flooding, soil testing. I've been up here quite a few times, talking about soil testing. I think Dan mentioned a few times, don't touch the water, folks, when it's in your basement. Don't touch it. What's in it? I don't know. I don't think anybody knows what's in it. So if we could actually do soil testing on each flood, the neighborhoods that flood to see what's in it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Baby steps. Blood tip at five oh six Hill Street. I can understand uh the frustration of the people in the flood zone. Because I've heard dozens and dozens of ideas. And for whatever reason, if it's not your idea, it's not a good idea. What needs to happen is we don't know exactly what is gonna work. We know it's not gonna work, is exactly what we've been doing. I've heard suggestions, and I've suggested myself. Just on the other side of um. Of, of the Mamaroneck River, uh after it crosses under the bridge. Put a pumping station over there, run it, and the minute you start to have flooding events. Pump as much water as you can. From Columbus Park over to the other side, where, where, where you have the backup. Some people say, oh, the pump's not gonna work. Well, maybe it doesn't work. All the pumps, maybe it, it, it's expensive. But let's put it before the, the voters. Are you willing to take a chance on a three hundred thousand dollar pump that might save your residences? They've also talked about possibility of opening up. Just off of Fayette Avenue, on the other side of Fayette, on the highway, and on the other side of Rockland Avenue. There's a bunch of land that at one point was supposed to be kind of part of like sheltering trails and everything. You know, it, it's, it's, it's unused. It's disconnected, all the paths from when I was a kid are gone and everything. Well, that might be someplace where you can open up. To try to stop the velocity of the river. You know, get permission and open, open that up, make that much wider, to make it wider all, all the way to um Fennemore Road. Will it help? I don't know. Or will it hurt? On the other side of Fennemore Road, you have a piece of property that they've been trying to sell for years and years. I think it's uh, it's listed for seven hundred thousand dollars. It's right um, right underneath Fennemore Road, on the right-hand side.
Eight hundred.
Environmentally.
Yeah, yeah.
We should be the ones who buy it. We should see how much water retention that we could put right there. To try to, to fix it so the highway bridge on Fennemore Road no longer floods. Where it's impassable if, if you have two inches of rain. These are things, uh, um, I know that um. Uh, George Latimer is talking about uh putting lakes. On the golf courses. Maplemore. And Saxon Woods. I, I've been bothering him about that for five years. But it's gotta be followed through with. It's gotta be, well, the lakes aren't gonna do anything. Well, the dredging's not gonna do anything. Well, the dam's not gonna do anything. Well, the pumps aren't gonna do anything. You know what? We're just gonna wait for the Army Corps of Engineer. You know what? These people are tired of waiting for the Army Corps of Engineer. I think it's time that this village turns around and says. We don't care if it's a, if we think it's a good idea, a bad idea, if we're gonna do dry wells. Can, can we um, can we lower the aqueduct? Or, or in, in the village of Mamaroneck? You know? Can we uh keep on the highway? I've seen that we have spoken to the highway. To make the highway upgrade the water system from when they built the road, and, and there was no water mitigation. Everything we can do. It might cost us a couple of million dollars, but you know what? I think these people here would be happier for you to spend two million dollars doing these projects than two million dollars doing a sidewalk project in Oriente. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Danielle Tassoli. And I live in Larchmont, Ankers. On the, the two jurisdictions, the town of Mamaroneck and the village of Mamaroneck. I have to live in the village. Okay? I agree with everybody that we talked here. No, we do not need a new building. It takes fifteen minutes to get from Larchmont to Mamaroneck. The traffic is impossible. The schools are overtaxed. There's just too many, there's just too many people. We can wait on this. I, you know what, I'm a senior citizen, I live on a fixed income, and I, I don't wanna live in that building. I worked two jobs to live and bring my children up here. I've lived here all my life. This is not necessary. I asked for things for, for, for uh, uh where I live. Garbage pails. I asked to fix the rat problem. I had to do all that work myself. The village didn't do anything. We had a rat problem on Ridgeville Avenue. And why? Like, this, they ticketed the whole street the other day. And they, they didn't come and clean the leaves. Now the leaves are all on Ridgeville Road. And tonight, the, the, the gutters, after the rain, are gonna get stuck. They're not gonna drain. So I really think that there is affordable housing around here. All the, there's a lot of two-family housing. I lived in two-family housing for twenty years in this area, and I always afforded it. I had one salary coming in, and I worked an extra job. You know, I mean, it can be done. You don't need a big structure now to, like somebody said. We're in the library, we're in the school system, we're in the police department. This, we have like. The, the, the apartment are all volunteer in the village. Now, the, you turn this into this uh ci- a little city, that's not gonna happen. You're gonna have to pay those salaries too. That's all I have to say. I, my brother told me not to get crazy, so.
My name is Deena Incognoli, I live in Harbor Heights, and I just wanted to speak very briefly in response to a previous speaker's. Comment about, you know, uh more children coming into the schools. And I think that unless you stood at the head of a class and you are a school teacher in a classroom. To say, oh, let's one or two more, that sounds really sweet. What's another one or another two children in a classroom? I have news for you, it's a lot, and it's dangerous to the children, it's dangerous to the parents, and it's stressful for the teacher. So I actually founded, I, I'm a New York City public school teacher, and I teach in a neighborhood. Where there's overcrowding, and there's rezoning, and all, everything that we're talking about doing in our village. And I have thirty-six children in my classroom, and there are days that I'm, I'm squeezing in and out of desks because I can barely sit in my classroom, because of all the desks. And on any given day, my phone rings, hi, Miss Incognoli, you're getting a new student, they're on their way up. So yes, it's one to welcome them. That sounds really sweet and really lovely. But the reality is, it, it's, it all, it doesn't hurt. Teachers have the stress of earning, keeping children on grade level. Um, you know, we hope they know to achieve grade level standards and, and showing growth. And that's not possible when you have thirty-six children. It's just not going to happen. You could believe all you want. That is wonderful to, to welcome more children, but it's, it's a disaster, and nothing good comes of it. And that I, from experience, being in a classroom every day that's crowded. I know there are days that at two twenty, I, I say, I don't, I don't think I said two words today, because there's so many of them. It's impossible. Responding to emails, meeting individual needs, and they all have individual needs that need to be met, it doesn't happen. It doesn't happen when there's the classroom group crowded.
Josh Lanza, I'd like to share, um, one more, one more thing, two more quick things. Um, to piggyback off the schools, uh, we were talking with the principal of Mamaroneck Avenue School. And she did not know how quickly this building was, was gonna be brought forth. And speaking to her, when we explained to her, her response was, oh my god, we cannot handle any more kids at Mamaroneck Avenue School. So I think it would be prudent to, you know, look at all the avenues, um, speak with all the facets and try to figure out really if this building i- is, is something that should be done. But, um, the one thing I did wanna say is, I don't know how many people follow what's going on in other towns. Um, obviously, White Plains and Harrison, um, their waterways spill into ours. My cousin lives on Old Mamaroneck Road. When Cherry Lawn was a golf course and had all that acreage of just free land, there was no flooding issue where he lived. The moment they built, they built all those condos and townhouses, he started getting a river through his front lawn. Now, fast forward to now. I have another cousin who works for the Water Works, and he and I were speaking. In Harrison, where the Renaissance Hotel is, they sold it. They are building seven hundred and fifty units on that parcel of land. Now, this is my cousin from the Water Works side, yes. He said that is going to destroy Mamaroneck. Because what's going to happen is, that huge swath of land is not gonna be taking in that watering. It's going to spill down our way. And though we can't, we're not responsible for what happens in other towns, this, this is just more of a case to really push hard on flooding here. And to try to figure out what's going on with the flooding here. We don't need the building, honestly, we, we really do need help with the flooding. Especially if these other towns and cities are gonna be building up in five years from now, it's just gonna get worse. Uh, the floodways are gonna open up, and Mamaroneck is gonna be completely underwater. And then, good luck trying to figure it out then.
Well, now, thank you for being here tonight. My name is Richard LaMond River. I live on Hyatt Street in Mamaroneck. I'm fortunate enough to look down at Mamaroneck from my backyard. And flooding for us is not an issue. However, at the last time we had floods, my wife and I volunteered, uh, helping collect donations and giving it out to those who really needed it at the Columbus Park. And the human side of all that to us really showed that although governments are there to help, organizations are there to help, there's a lot of people that don't get reached. So as far as fun goes, I do think it is the biggest pri- priority for the village. And there's a lot more people in this room who are more qualified to talk about what should or should not be done. I'm here tonight again to talk about across the street. And, um, when I was the Chamber of Commerce president, and to this day, all I hear about is the traffic and the lack of parking. And when I came up here last time to talk, I talked about how ridiculous it is that not only you're not adding parking, you're taking away parking. So the question I have for all of you is, rather than putting in more, um, housing, what about ripping down a two-tier parking lot and putting up five-tier parking? Because that's what we need in this village. If we wanna continue to have a vibrant village where people can come and enjoy themselves, they have to park somewhere. Many people have come up here time and time again and said, I have a two-round trip rule. If I can't find a place to park after two trips, I go somewhere else. And that's gonna continue to happen. The traffic is out of control. You can't go near Mamaroneck Avenue School. Anytime, ten minutes to eight to three o'clock in the afternoon, it's impossible to get around. There's flooding there constantly. And what I would say is that we need to, again, worry about the people who are here who are voting for you, and as Amy had said, there's consequences to what you folks do. And those consequences will be an end of your term if you don't start thinking about the people who live here today. And stop worrying about the people who wanna come here, because we're the ones who are paying the taxes to live here and enjoy what we wanna live here for. Because you're gonna have a lot of people who are moving out, and it's just gonna be a disaster for everybody, so. I just hope you think about it, and, and think about the people who actually live here, and take care of what everybody said, which is the flooding. You guys, at the last meeting that I was here, you approved a half a million dollars for the park in Ride to do some basketball courts. That half a million dollars should have avoided floods.
Yeah, right.
Should have been about pre- preventing the next flood, but we're rebuilding basketball courts in this village. It's, I, I get it that we have to take care of all sectors, but we have to take care of the people who are, to die the next time it rains. And that's something that nobody here is, like, really focused on. I mean, yes, I'm sorry, you're focused, but your focus needs to be only on that. Prioritize. It's, it's all about the flood. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, my name is Anna Bianco, and I live, um, on Madison Street. Um, right across from Plaza Avenue, and yes, I'm at the bottom of the hill. My house, actually, is at the bottom of the hill. Tomorrow, I hope, I won't be. Anyway, I did get the, um, call from Mr. Ingenitor. So what do you think I did today? My, my mind already started to go a little crazy and said, okay, now I have to think. Guess what? Tomorrow, early tomorrow, I will be bringing my car to the Hunter Lot here, because that's what I'm directed to do. There's nowhere else on Washingtonville for us to park. And it's really sad because I've lived on Madison since, well, in the Washingtonville area. Washington, Washington Street and Madison since nineteen seventy-nine. And we have gone through, since that period, we have gone, attended so many meetings, a lot of us, you know, that live in, in the area. So many meetings, and we always depended on the Army Corps of Engineer. Well, guess what? I am so done with the Army Corps of Engineer. They're a bunch, they're not an army. They're not an army at all. All they do is they love to make, get their money from the government, and they do one study after another, after another, after another, and guess what? After a certain amount of time, that study is, it doesn't, it's not worth it anymore. So you gotta come back and do more studies. I haven't seen a single thing. And we didn't have the flooding that we have now. But, you know, thank god, you know, whoever thought about putting the mason up there. Right, I, I don't know how that thing went through. I, I have, you know, I didn't attend a lot of meetings because I don't think it was even put out there for us to attend the meetings. I'm sure there were a few, but anyway. Um, so it, it's very stressful. It's very hard. And, um, I, I have a home next door to mine that has been abandoned. And this other, I can think of a couple more, also on Center Avenue and, and on Waverly, that they're being abandoned. And guess what? I think I'm gonna be, my house is gonna be in five years from now, ten years from now, maybe, I'm gonna have to abandon my house because of the what you guys are going to decide to do with that area. Work needs to be done. Walls need to be put up. It's gonna have, it's over and over and over, we're living this, every, it's a nightmare now. Every time I get the phone calls, like, look at me now, I'm a mess. I really am. And I don't know what to do. I pay eighteen thousand dollars in taxes on a house that floods every time it rains. So, tell me. I don't think anybody has any answers, but you really need, like, somebody said, I can't remember now, Ed, get ahold of Schumer, get ahold of Hochul, they really need to come down here. I don't believe in the Army Corps of Engineers, honestly. And, and I'm sure the FMA, they do have some great things. You should really listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Turcoletti, Gertrude Avenue. I am a member of the FMAC, but I'm here from herself. Number one, forget the affordable housing. I don't care whose pet project it is. We're not here to serve, you're not here to serve, your pet projects are here to serve us. So if you wanna go and move ahead with something like that, I agree with Amy and someone else brought it up. Put it on the ballot as a referendum and let everyone vote on it. Clearly, this is not our entire village. We're the only people that come out because we care and can, and have a little time. ACE isn't gonna do anything for us, and we all know it. ACE hasn't even started to design for Ward Avenue Bridge. At least in your village. We need to start the projects that we feel can benefit us in any way possible. Let me also say, I am also a fourth-generation Mamaroneck resident. My cousin spoke about that, I'll. Could be the last generation for me, because I'm ready. Nothing is being done. It's all smoke and mirrors here. The FMAC has put up, excuse me, has put up quite a few ideas. Where are they going? Pumps, get them in the damn rivers. They can't get the water out of Columbus Park, which is causing the problem. My neighborhood never flooded like it does now. You know where the drains go from my neighborhood by Mamaroneck Avenue School that is very overcrowded? They go to Columbus Park. So is Columbus Park floods, we flood. The town of Mamaroneck, we need to deal with them and releasing water out of their reservoir. They released the water at the height of a storm was getting flooded. Plaza Avenue, Center, where do you think that one's coming from? We honestly need to do something. I could talk for a long time, seven o'clock, I have to go home and empty my basement.
I just wanna say one more thing about the village. That put parking meters on both some post roads, so now it's making it harder to access the Harbor Park for people. From one hand, they're saying, oh, they want affordable housing, help the poor, but they put parking meters right at, in, in front of the park. Do they even have the right to do that? Does that belong to the county or who, who, does that belong to Mamaroneck?
What parking documents? So much park, it's our park.
Yeah. They put parking meters right there.
That was a year ago.
Right. It doesn't concern me, because I live in Marchmont, okay, in the village of Mamaroneck, okay? The two, the, and, and the town of Mamaroneck and the village of Mamaroneck take co- control of that street, Ridge Bell Road. They don't even talk to each other. The village does not talk to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to piggyback off something that Josh said earlier about, you know, talking to your schools, towards Mamaroneck Avenue School, about these type of, you know, buildings that are going up and what that's gonna mean for them. Um, there are discussions going on, you know, on social media right now. I don't have any kids currently in Mamaroneck High School. But a lot of these students and parents are complaining that there's not enough parking there, it's just the overcrowded. Um, unfortunately, the kids are forced to walk to school, you know, how that goes, they don't want to, but, you know, it's a, it's a trickle-down effect. And they should be aware, you know, we're bringing in more people, more people are coming into their classrooms and their schools, more, it's gonna be less parking at a parking lot. And it's just gonna amplify the problem. So again, like Josh said, you know, talk to your schools. I mean, our, our school taxes are, are going up. Um, I don't, you know, my school tax went up almost two thousand dollars in one year. I mean, we have children in the school district. So, you know, you guys are, you guys are basically going to run us taxpayers and homeowners out of Mamaroneck. Last thing.
Thank you, Eva.
Hi, I'm Adelina Clark, and I live on Hyatt Street. Um, again, I'm not in the flood zone, but I am against this affordable housing because I think it's gonna contribute to flooding. There's gonna be sewage that comes from that housing. There's bathrooms in that housing. Where is that water going to go? Our infrastructure can't handle it. It's apparent just from the flooding that we've had. I don't think enough time has been spent looking at this project. It's kind of just been thrown at us, and now it's gonna go up. There's parking issues, there's business issues, there's people issues, there's safety issues. EMS can't handle it, the fire department can't handle it. Everything that everybody has said in here, we just can't handle it. And it has to stop. I've lived here my entire life. I came here, well, I lived here my entire life. I worked as a single mother. I didn't have affordable housing. I worked as a nurse. I saved for a house that I bought twenty-three years ago as a single mom, mother birthed. So if I can do it, anybody can do it without affordable housing.
No, we don't have. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is public hearings, of which we do not, which we don't have. Um, next would be the audit of the bills. Which we are not going to have this evening, we have not been submitted to us. Old business. Does anybody wanna open, um, have a good evening? What? Oh, where's he? Is he coming up or not? No, I guess he doesn't. Agreement to prepare a request for proposal for the village manager position?
Okay, so I mean, I think this, we, um, as Jerry has announced, he's retiring or going, he's going on to greener pastures. And, um, and his, his date is April the fifth, and so it's, we need to start looking for another village manager. And so we determined at the work session that we would begin to, um, look for a firm to help guide us. So I don't think we're gonna do an RFP. I think what we're gonna do is, um, interview a series of, um, executive recruiters and, um, look for a new village manager.
Well, we need to do it on a fairly tight timeline.
We do, so.
There are several that are, that have worked.
Yeah, so what we need to do is interview them, and then at, at, get, pick, select one and have them execute a search. So that's what we will be working on, and I, maybe at, at the next meeting, we'll be able to actually retain.
And, and the question, do we, do we wanna require that the new village manager, uh, live in the village?
That's not for today. That's not for today.
To get an executive search firm, but we could always have an interest.
Yeah, okay, let's, uh, deal with it.
Are there any comments?
The next item is, um, donated, uh, Revolution, accepting bench donations for bench of the Harbor Island Park. And we have two of those. Um, let me get down to that page.
Yeah, who was he?
First one, first one is, um, being donated by friends and supporters of former mayor Thomas A. Murphy.
Yes.
Um, the, these friends and supporters are desirous of donating a bench and plaque to be placed in Harbor Island Park in gratitude and thanks for its twenty-three years of public service to the Mamaroneck community. So I, I need a motion to accept the donation of the bridge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then we have a second donation. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Emmett, Em- Amon and Dale Kelly are desirous of donating a bench and plaque to be placed in Tompkins Avenue Park in memory of Mr. Joe Hublacy. May I have a motion?
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, um, we have bond resolution for a series of capital projects, but, um, that has been moved to our next meeting, which is in two weeks.
Yeah.
So, and the backup, uh, just changed a little bit. The amount didn't change, but some of the details changed. Just some of the breakdown of the details. So we'll be working on that in two weeks, um. The next is, we are authorizing a grant to, for this middle and transportation, it's, it's, it's a tap grant, um, like to, to a transportation alternatives grant to approve Mamaroneck and Mount Pleasant at Halsted Avenue's intersection. So it's the intersection near the, near the famous railroad bridge. And we are applying for a grant, and Dan can talk about that.
Yeah, um, one of the complaints or requests we've had over the years was to, uh, construct a crosswalk across the Mount Pleasant leg of the intersection. Was to uh, construct a crosswalk across the Mount Pleasant leg of the intersection. Uh, that section is actually owned by Westchester County, so anything that's done there, they would have to approve. Uh, and because of the functioning of the intersection. Uh, there's always a potential for cars to make internal movements onto Mount Pleasant, which is the reason why the county has never granted permission. Uh, we've talked with them, we have a conceptual plan. Uh, and we'd like to uh, submit a grant to redesign the intersection. And also uh, replace the traffic signal at the intersection with a complex signal handling. Uh, more than just that one intersection, so. Uh, and the grant is due tomorrow, and uh, I believe, uh, I think I discussed with the board. That uh, in the resolution, I have an updated budget. Um, and uh, the grant project. Is uh, one million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. Of which the village would be responsible for twenty percent, or uh, three hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars.
So without the resolution, we can't afford the grant.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, um, I, I move.
Yeah, cause we need a motion.
Uh, I, I move, we authorize an application for the New York State Transportation Alternatives Carbon Reduction Program. And match commitment for the project that uh, Mr. Sonoff has described.
All in favor?
Aye.
Where we down, which one we have two? Wow, you'd be faster without me.
No, not with five D, five D. Millennium. So uh, this is a motion to um, renew our, uh, the, the contract that we have with a grant writing firm. Um, it's, the contract is, it's thirty, I don't know, thirty-three hundred dollars a month, maybe, and. Um, and thus far, we, this, and they have been very good about getting, helping us get grants, and so we are going to renew the, we're, we need a. A motion to renew the contract for another year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sally, is there any way to check the temperature? Yeah, a little bit, it's really hot.
It's fine for me, but. You're also not well, so.
But not now.
We also just had a very full courtroom, which probably made it a little bit.
There was a, there was a lot of uh, of air movement.
So we're, we're expanding FloodMac, you wanna do that? So now we're at item um, five E? No, no, no. Five E. Um, we, it's a resolution authorizing um, the, a request for. To the New York State Department of Transportation to consider a complete streets concept. Um, in the planned twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six, we're referencing the Boston Post Road for the entire of the work area. And this goes from Larchmont up to Rye, basically.
Our whole area.
And we're asking that they can, that they can, can consider a, a safe streets, a complete streets approach to their design. So can we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so FloodMac, um, we um, had. A, an extra number of applicants for the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee this year, and. We also realized that um, as flooding is increasing throughout the village, we wanted to be able to have a more diverse representation from areas of the community. So we're expanding the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee from seven to nine people, and we need a motion to make that expansion.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, right, so we're, we're gonna appoint two new members to the committee. One is Susan Duchensky, um, and, and one is um, David Freeman. Um, the David Freeman is being appointed for uh, a term of one year. Um, to expire at the annual organization meeting this year. And Susan Duchensky for a term of three years to expire at the organizational meeting at December twenty-twenty-six. And this is just to keep the term staggered. In that motion?
So moved.
And then um, we have an Arts Council opening. What?
Yeah, we're gonna hold on that.
Are we gonna hold?
I think, I think.
Yeah.
Just do it.
Okay, go ahead. So um, there's one more opening on the Arts Council, um, it's, and it's, we have an applicant, and her name is Catherine Graham. And she is to be appointed uh, to the Arts Council for a term to expire at the organizational meeting of December twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And um, what, this is our last item? No.
No.
Sorry, we're, okay, um, this, uh, we have, um, it is time to renew the contract with our attorney. And um, so whereas village attorney Robert Aspoldino and deputy village attorney Mary Desmond. With the law firm of Abrams, Fensterman, Fensterman, Eiseman, Promato, Ferraro, Wolf, and, and Carone. Were appointed to the Board of Trustees at the Annual Organization Meeting of December fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Now therefore be resolved, and the Board of Trustees just hereby authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with Abrams, Fensterman. Fensterman, Eiseman, Promato, Ferraro, Wolf, and Carone LLP. To serve as village attorney and to provide legal services to the village in accordance with the terms of the agreement. Dated January eighth, twenty-twenty-four, which is today, and it's a two-point-five percent increase. So nothing else is changing in our retainer, and it's all here as backup. We have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank god it's not indexed to inflation.
Okay, now. It's invitation to address the board too. Uh, you probably wanted to talk at Safe City at the, at the resolution, but.
My sweet, for those of you that, I'm the young fighting guy, I just wanna say.
Sorry, what's your name again?
Michael Sneak. I live in the town of Mamarone, actually, at my Staples, but I wanna say thank you for uh, passing the resolution. Um, super quick, because I know it's super late, but Boston Post Road is a very critical piece of infrastructure, as we all know, we drive there every day. There's more than six thousand kids that go to various schools along that path, along that road. There's been five fatalities in less than ten years on that road, it's obvious that it's dangerous. Uh, New York State is going to repeal it anyway, let's get them to expand the design. And uh, do something that would make it safe for all kids to ride to school, because in the end. One of the biggest sources of traffic congestion in this town is people in the village and the whole area is people. Dropping their kids off at school, and if kids feel, if parents feel safe sending their kids to school on a bike, it will go a long way to alleviating that. And unfortunately, the existing plan, the village of Larchmont is getting a complete streets redesign somehow, the village of Mamarone did not, despite probably being. Geographically more suited, so hopefully we'll be able to do a lot of heavy lifting for you guys, but. Uh, nice to see the resolution that uh, if called upon, we can reach out to you guys to sort of press the political muscle, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, okay, report from the clerk, uh, clerk treasurer?
Uh, yes, mayor. So we have two things tonight, we received a statement of canvas for the November seventh, twenty-twenty-three general election. And we also received a resignation of a Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee, Committee Member Elsa Rubin. We thank Ms. Rubin for her service to the community.
I think we already thanked her earlier. How did you know the future, Nora?
I have a future on the list. Report from the village attorney?
Local law twenty is filed with the Secretary of State, ineffective, that's the local law. Uh, revising the notification received for landing.
Let me read the minute?
Yes, please.
Okay, and we have um, minutes for boards, uh, commissions and committees. Minutes to the Board of Trustees, special meetings of November twentieth and December second, and the work session on November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Minutes of HCZM meetings from, of May seventeenth, August third, September twentieth, October eighteenth, and November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Minutes of the zoning Board of Appeals meetings June one, July twenty-seventh, September seventh, September eighteenth, and October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Minutes of the Board of Architectural Review meetings of June twenty-second, July twentieth, August second, September fifth, September twenty-first, October nineteenth, and November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Minutes of the Treaty Committee meetings of October fourth and November eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. And minutes of the Budget Committee meetings of September fifth, October sixteenth, and November ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Minutes of the Committee for the Environment meetings of October seventeenth and November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Minutes of the Ethics Board meetings of September twentieth and October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. And minutes of the Board of Traffic Commissioners meetings of July nineteenth and October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. So, and that's it. If anybody.
Alright, and our, our next meeting for the Board of Trustees will be Monday, January twenty-second. Um, unless we add something else?
Anybody else? Okay.
Anyone wanna motion it goes? Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you all for being here, have a wonderful evening.
Thank everybody for coming.